Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, great. I just don't have your video as the only parts. I guess you guys are working on that.
Can you see us now?
No, I can't see the boardroom. I can't see anything in the room. And I so I can't see the screen. Yeah, I just have a black.
Okay, um, I thank you all for your patience. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And hopefully by the time we get to Megan will be past her technical difficulties. I'll entertain roll call.
Here, here, there we go.
Here.
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 Okay, Jennifer, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to the clerk for public comment.
Warren Bleeker.
All right. My name is Warren Bleeker. My wife Terry and I have two students at Marshall, a sixth grader and an eighth grader. And I am the chair of the Marshall Annual Fund. I first want to thank Dr. McDonald and the board for all the support that you provide Marshall and Marshall's Annual Fund. And I wanted to highlight some of the reasons why I think Marshall should be prioritized in the facilities master plan. One of PUSD's core values is equity, and rightfully so. PUSD believes that every child is equally entitled to high-quality education, and that different needs require different levels of resources to enable all children to achieve their full potential. In terms of equity, Marshall serves the most underserved students in the entire district. Based on the 2022 enrollment numbers, Marshall serves almost 1,500 socio-economically disadvantaged students. Marshall also serves the most unhoused students out of any school in PUSD. And it's important to remember Marshall is a lottery-only school, so every student at Marshall specifically chose to apply and attend Marshall. On the equity scale, Marshall is very deserving of priority in allocating these resources. Another core consideration for this board should be investing in school sites that consistently bring and keep students in the district. Marshall is the largest school site in PUSD in terms of students. It's close to full capacity in 2022-23. It will be at full capacity the next school year. It constitutes 12% of PUSD's entire enrollment, and it is one of PUSD's most successful school sites. Marshall draws students into PUSD who did not attend the district previously. It draws from private and charter schools. Marshall is the only school site that offers AP Capstone, the only school site next year offering AP African-American history. Its six-through-12 model offers many advantages, and it has a long history of academic success. Its arts programs are amazing. Many Marshall students were leads in the production of Into the Woods. Its band, orchestra, drama, dance, and choir programs are all outstanding, and it has a strong athletics department. As you'll hear from the other comments and as you've heard before at the facilities meetings, there is urgent need for financial investment in Marshall. Marshall, it's almost 100 years old. The roof of the bandroom collapsed. The softball field needs to be fixed. The soccer and track facilities need a lot of work. There's HVAC problems. The stage in the auditorium is mostly just shards of wood that are held together by duct tape. Nonetheless, Marshall continues to excel and continues to keep at capacity. So the district should prioritize its financial investment into school sites that service the most students, the most socio-economically challenged students, and the school sites with the most need for improvement and modernization. Marshall comes in first in every category, and its needs and the needs of its students and faculty should be prioritized. Thank you.
Alita Keeling.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Superintendent Dr. McDonald. Findings from the previous enrollment committee key outcomes has identified that Pasadena Unified School District, when Pasadena Unified School District closes schools, enrollment declines. When PUSD's investigation has identified this fact, why is it that Pasadena Board of Education members continue to prioritize this issue? You can state decline in enrollment is the reason. However, I feel the constant address of this issue is in direct effect of the overall issues our district continues to face, causing a snowball of decline in enrollment. When people hear the word insolvent regarding their bank deposits, people often run to the brick and mortars to withdraw their deposits. When districts talk closure, it's a repellent to those in the community who have already had their opinion of the passing of the public school. If we talk about building, maybe our result would be different. For example, this year Marshall Fundamental had over 325 families registered for our school tours. Forty-seven percent are currently enrolled in private charter or are homeschooled. On average, there was 2.5 people per registrant we hosted at Marshall Middle School and High School shadow days and bringing nearly 1,000 guests to our campus. It is true that the birth rate has decreased. However, we have opportunities to build in the community with more than 40% of the student population attending private charter and homeschool. We have an opportunity that is continuously dismissed based on the dysfunction that finds itself at the forefront of our conversation. As the Assistant Coordinator of Marketing, Student Recruitment, and Community Relations for Marshall Fundamental Secondary School, I am taking each additional conversation about school closure personally, especially when it comes to the students I serve on the campus that had traditionally and contentedly housed nearly 2,000 students. Each year, our school has been at capacity. The current year percentage has dipped because of Principal Lori Tullumian's direction. Quick note, please do not do your own research. John Marshall Junior High was built in 1920s. It was built nearly 100 years since its conception, and many changes has occurred. We've been configured so many different ways. Please note that we have moved forward 100 years, and no matter what the configuration, we have continued to find success. Our current number is 1,800. That's still 12% of PUSD's population. This is without having an attendance zone. Students and families want to attend. This is also with PUSD doing an amazing job of creating programs to build interest at other PUSD middle and high schools and have shown great results. In celebrating Marshall Fundamental with a 98% graduation rate, according to the U.S. News World Report, we are ranked 190 in California and 13-03 nationally ranking above our other peer schools. We have 17 sports, 39 sports teams. That includes boys, girls, co-ed JV varsity squads, 360 athletes, nearly 425 players. Our middle school and high schools collectively have over 50 clubs that serve interests of our diverse student population, noting 70% of our students face socioeconomic status in qualifying for free and reduced lunch. Let us not turn our back on these children, and thank you for your time.
Jennifer Boynton.
Good evening. I am a school teacher here in Pasadena for over 25 years, and I'm glad that you have pillar three on your master plan. But in 2016, you had a few bullet points that talked about safe, welcoming, clean, accessible schools. But I have to remind you all, six weeks ago, on March 4th, I emailed all of you, a very long email, and I shared a folder with you with over 150 pictures that were atrocious. I hope that it broke your heart as much as it broke all of our teachers' hearts that had to take these pictures of unsafe, unsanitary, absolutely disgusting situations that we are dealing with on our school campuses. Then five weeks ago, on March 12th, Leonard Hernandez said he was gonna do a time-in-motion study. We want to know about that time-in-motion study. But then last month, he resigned. Four weeks ago, on March 23rd, you guys approved to have a consultant come to find out about our ratios, to find out about the workstations for our custodians. We want to know about that. We would like to know the results of that, but we also want to know who is now responsible for our custodian staff. Is it Dr. Barnes? Is it Dr. McDonald? We know our principals are also over them. They can write up. They can ask. My principal showed someone how to clean something. Another principal had to clean the floor and show them how to clean the floor. At my campus, every week, someone sees a rat. Could be a student, could be a staff member. And every Friday, I take pictures of overflowing trash cans that stay there all weekend with food in them. It's really sad. We would like to have soap and toilet paper in all the bathrooms for the students. We would like to have locking doors in the high schools. I've heard three testimonies of parents who pick their children up to take them home to use the bathroom because they don't feel safe. They don't have privacy to use the restroom. You all have used the restroom today, and you felt safe. You had your supplies. But hundreds of students in the high schools do not feel safe, and there's stories of other things happening in there of why they don't feel safe. We have junkyards of things stacked up on campuses that need to be addressed. It shouldn't be a junkyard. So a month ago, a journalist contacted me and wanted to write a story about this. I said, hold off. Let's wait. Because we want to give them spring break. We told them six weeks ago. I believe something's gonna change. Nothing has changed. We wanted to write a celebratory story. We wanted to say the teachers brought this to the board and the school district made changes, and things improved, but they haven't. Think about pillar three and how to make it happen, because it's not happening now. Thank you.
Sarah Marie Campbell.
Sorry, I'm really short. Good evening. Thank you for having us here. I'm not gonna be as eloquent as Warren or as Alita, but I am here to speak on behalf of Marshall. So I've lived in Pasadena my entire life. I, in fact, live across the street from Marshall Fundamental. My stepmother went to high school there and many of our older friends, and I've seen it grow and change. And I know it's a school that has been a lot of different things to this district. When I went to high school in Pasadena, it was something that a lot of families didn't do. And I'm happy to say that my generation has been able to put our kids back in PUSD, and it's a big deal for us. And so I want to thank you as a board for all that you guys have done to bring public education back to Pasadena's kids. But I also want to tell you that Marshall is a pillar of our community, and it can't go. We need the facilities to keep kids there. We need the staff to help the kids feel safe, feel wanted, feel comfortable, and feel supported. We are exceptionally lucky to have an amazing principal, amazing administrators like Alita here, but we need the facilities to keep up. Our bandroom has been without a roof for over a year. Our fields continue to be kicked down the road like a can. We have bathrooms that don't work, so we have entire hallways of buildings where they can't teach classes right now. And it's not about what we need as adults. Our kids don't understand bureaucracy that says we don't have the money to fix your bathrooms right now. And our kids come home from school and they say, obviously, no one cares about us because our school is falling apart. And no student should feel that way. We have a lot of underserved kids in our schools. I'm amazed at everything you guys have done. We appreciate free lunches for all children. It's been such a huge step, and I want to thank you for that. But please, let's take the next step and give our kids what they deserve in their educational system.
Michael Schmidt.
Good evening. I, again, won't speak as eloquently as Warren and Alita. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Michael Schmidt. My wife and I currently have an eighth grader at Marshall, and we have a two-year-old daughter. She'll be a PUSD student soon. We will be in PUSD for a very long time, probably longer than most of the people in this room. We have many more years out of us, and we love the district. We love the schools, and we love the choices that have always been available. We chose Marshall because we love its academic rigor, its diversity, and its amazing talented staff. Our daughter struggled with academics in elementary school, but due to some amazing teachers at Marshall, she's grown light years. She's taking all AP classes. She has a 3.8 GPA. It's honestly stunning. I firmly believe that Marshall is a choice like no other, but it's currently, like we've stated tonight, clearly in some major facilities neglect. The fields are horrible and an eyesore for the neighborhood. If you drive by, you definitely would agree with this. This is not a great way for us to advertise our public schools. It's not a great way for us to advertise PUSD and choosing public school over private schools. The auditorium stage is full of splinters. The bandroom project needs to happen ASAP. And I personally know several families that are considering sending their kids to private schools because of the lack of maintenance at Marshall. Unfortunately, these families are not choosing other PUSD schools, and when I asked them about this, they acted as if I was crazy, to be quite honest. In my personal opinion, we need to focus on uniting our schools and our efforts against the private schools and not our infighting amongst ourselves. Focus is drawing, we should be drawing a light onto the amazing things that each and every one of our PUSD schools has to offer. In our nine-plus years of PUSD as a parent volunteer, parent leader, I've talked to countless people in the community that have negative views of our district only because of hearsay and the reputation from generations in the past. We have a chance to change this by retaining the families that we have and getting new families that would otherwise choose another choice for schools. Thank you again so much for your time tonight.
Renee Gonzalez.
Is it gonna be reset?
Go ahead.
I should reset it?
No, it's on now.
It's counting backwards.
The reset, that's...
Yeah. Well, good evening, everyone. So, thank you. So I'm here to bring some insight into the DLR report that is presented today. I have witnessed how the community, the public have requested that all the sites be included on their data. And up until now, they are still omitting the sites that are important for the board to consider future decisions as far as capacity and usage, you know, like Roosevelt Elementary, Jefferson, and all these schools that are existing. So I think that it's very important for this board to have this data available to them before making any decisions on prioritization. If you're gonna remodel any schools, if you're gonna, you know, put programs together, you're gonna really need to see what is available as far as square footage, especially, you know, because we have made mistakes in the past with measure-all money. So this is not a way to gain the public's trust. Roosevelt Elementary is also omitted from any historic considerations of value. And just, you know, very quickly, I want to mention that we're doing a historic preservation nomination for Roosevelt. And not that I believe that it matters to DLR Group, but Roosevelt was created during the past pandemic in the U.S. The polio pandemic affected in the late 40s up to 35,000 people a year. They were disabled. Teachers, students, rich, poor, black, brown, everything. So Roosevelt was constructed in the late 40s, and it was open in 1953, so it had to be designed at least four years behind that. So this is a direct action from our ancestors to, you know, correct this problem and this need on the city. You know, this was a nationwide epidemic, just like the one we have right now. People were isolated. You know, it was frantic. You know, I've been doing a lot of research, and I think that it's important to consider this site for future generations. It is a one-story site where the children can, you know, easily go from the playground to the inside. It has handrails all over the place, even in the classrooms, on the chalkboards. So it has a lot of rich historic value. And when there was a lot of disabled children, this is one of the schools, this was a school that was integrated for general education. People, you know, children of black, brown, and white were on the same classroom. And I guess we're so dumb as humans that at that point, when you think that your child is gonna die, then you start forgetting about prejudice, stupidity, and then value that your child is alive and allow him to be in the same room with other children. So I think it has a lot of rich history, and it should not be omitted by DLR. And we have constantly asked them to include it, and we're still being ignored. Thank you.
I'm going to do the reading comments now. President? "High School Board Members, thank you for helping the Linda Vista neighbors receive the positive comments from the school board regarding the removal of bungalows from our school site. We really appreciate it very much. We hope to continue working with you to get this project to the finish line." Ken Kiesling. "Good afternoon. My name is Hannah Sakai. I'm currently a senior at Marshall..." And up until now, they are still omitting the sites that are important for the board to consider future decisions as far as capacity and usage, you know, like Roosevelt Elementary, Jefferson, and all these schools that are existing. So I think that it's very important for this board to have this data available to them before making any decisions on prioritization. If you're going to remodel any schools, if you're going to, you know, put programs together, you're going to really need to see what is available as far as square footage, especially, you know, because we have made mistakes in the past with measure-all money. So this is not a way to gain the public's trust. Roosevelt Elementary is also omitted from any historic considerations of value. And just, you know, very quickly, I want to mention that we're doing a historic preservation nomination for Roosevelt, and not that I believe that it matters to DLR Group, but Roosevelt was created during the past pandemic in the U.S. The polio pandemic affected in the late '40s up to 35,000 people a year. They were disabled, teachers, students, rich, poor, black, brown, everything. So this was, Roosevelt was constructed in the late '40s, and it was open in 1953, so it had to be designed at least four years behind that. So this is a direct action from our ancestors to, you know, correct this problem and this need on the city. You know, this was a nationwide epidemic, just like the one we have right now. People were isolated, you know, it was frantic, you know. I've been doing a lot of research, and I think that it's important to consider this site for future generations. It is a one-story site where the children can, you know, easily go from the playground to the inside. It has handrails all over the place, even in the classrooms, on the chalkboards. So it has a lot of rich historic value. And when there was a lot of disabled children, this is one of the schools, this was a school that was integrated for general education. People, you know, children of black, brown, and white were on the same classroom. And I guess we're so dumb as humans that, at that point, when you think that your child is going to die, then you start forgetting about prejudice, stupidity, and then value that your child is alive and allow him to be in the same room with other children. So I think it has a lot of rich history, and it should not be omitted by DLR. And we have constantly asked them to include it, and we're still being ignored. Thank you.
I'm going to do the reading comments now, President. High School Board Members, thank you for helping the Linda Vista neighbors receive the positive comments from the school board regarding the removal of bungalows from our school site. We really appreciate it very much. We hope to continue working with you to get this project to the finish line. Ken Kiesling.
Good afternoon. My name is Hannah Sakai. I'm currently a senior at Marshall Fundamental and have been attending Marshall since the sixth grade. I serve as the editor-in-chief of Marshall's Broadcast Journalism Department, as well as the historian of Marshall's ASB. Having occupied these positions, I've had the opportunity of documenting student life, capturing Marshall's school culture through photo and video while simultaneously experiencing it firsthand. Below, I've attached a video that I believe encapsulates Marshall's irreplaceable culture. Throughout my many years at Marshall, not once has the school ever let me down. The student population has always been closely connected and has been nothing but welcoming. Marshall's community is unlike any other, and I'm beyond grateful that I had the pleasure of being a part of it for the past seven years. I hope to see this environment persist. Thank you for your time and consideration. Hannah Sakai, Marshall Fundamental. Dear Board Members, I have had three children at Marshall Fundamental over the past 11 years.
Okay, this is emailed, so what do we do here? Okay, yes. This is Mark Carish.
Janika Briggs.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have two hats. The first one is a teacher. And as a teacher, I want to thank you for the technology improvements you have delivered to us. Last week, I received my first-ever, after 20 years of teaching, not just district MacBook. And you conducted a survey, you asked us, teachers, what we wanted, and you delivered, and I have the equipment I need and feel respected and professional and ready to go. So thank you for that very much. And then I want to thank you for your endless service to the students and families in our district. I understand you carry immense responsibility, and I acknowledge that decision-making is very complex for you. I'm here also as a parent. I have three daughters who have attended several of the fantastic PUSD schools, and I have enjoyed the last seven years watching, first, my oldest daughter grow at Marshall Fundamental. The strong academic focus and rigor delivered, as well as outreach community programs such as VIPS, have well-equipped her as a thriving student at UCLA this freshman year. Equally important to her, as a student of color, she appreciated the diverse staff, administration, and student body. Those of you who have visited must have enjoyed the culture at Marshall, and if you haven't, I encourage you to do so. You will come to appreciate that the Marshall student population and their families represent the range of ethnic and socioeconomic diversity of Pasadena. You will find that the collegial and harmonious nature of this community fosters a sense of camaraderie, that is, the foundation of the academic and social development that students receive. And you will comprehend how thrilled I am to get to spend seven more years watching now my youngest daughter go there as well. I'm troubled by the rumors of school closures and the naming of Marshall as a specialty school. May just be a technicality. And I urge you to allow Marshall to continue to serve our Pasadena students in the six-to-12 capacity it is right now, as it provides true equity to our city. A school available to all students, not just those residents in the vicinity of a school, including the 78% of the students who receive free and reduced lunch. A school that offers rigor with honors and AP programs available to all driven students, regardless of gate placement, with support programs and unique opportunities available to all. My youngest is not a gate student. She wanted to enroll in the honors program. She's risen to the occasion, and she loves the challenges of the meaningful assignments. My oldest was mentored by students a few years ahead, and now my youngest is coached by a high schooler to start a middle school version of the volunteer club. So this six-to-12 program and community is very beneficial. And finally, a school that is centrally located and physically accessible to all, especially those who depend on public transportation, ensures true equity. Thank you.
Dear Board Members, I have had three children at Marshall Fundamental over the past 11 years. Two have graduated, and one is currently a 10th grader. This has been a fabulous school for my children and has done a great job of not only preparing them for college, but exposing them to a diverse group of students. The school has been near capacity the entire time my children have attended, and the school continues to be very desirable for parents who are considering Pasadena public schools for their middle and high school-aged children. However, Marshall has several facility issues that need to be fixed. First, my 10th grader is in jazz band, and there is no bandroom. Apparently, the bandroom was deemed unsafe over a year ago, and the jazz band and the other bands have had to practice in the auditorium. This poses multiple challenges and is unfair to the children. The auditorium is often being used for other purposes, such as assemblies or performances. Also, despite being discussed for most of the 11 years my children have attended Marshall, the auditorium has no HVAC system and is very cold in the winter months and very hot in the late spring and the late summer months. HVAC in the auditorium is a separate issue that needs to be addressed. Also, without the bandroom, it is hard for students to securely store their instruments and other band materials. The bathrooms in school fields also need to be upgraded and repaired so that they are safe. Marshall Fundamental is a jewel of the district and a school that parents who are debating whether to enroll their middle and high school students in public school are eager to attend. In view of the expected decline in district enrollment, the district should be doing as much as possible to help Marshall continue to thrive. That includes continued support of its administration, teachers, and staff, but also includes fixing the facility issues. Marshall is a school that should be celebrated, not neglected. Thank you for your time and efforts on behalf of all students in the district. Sincerely, Mark Carish. Dear Board, Marshall is special. It should be emulated. It is diverse, highly performing, and so much more. It kept our family in the district. We are the largest school in the district. There is a reason for that, and families are happy with the education they receive. Our diversity and the socioeconomic status of our students mirror the district. Please lobby to keep us six-to-12. We should be a model, not a teardown. I am a Blair grad. My brothers went to PHS, and we chose Marshall for our two children. That should say something. With warmth, Will Morris. Good evening, PUSD School Board. We are pretty pathosarathy, sorry if I said that incorrectly, and koshik sampath, parents of Ukt, Koshik, eighth grader at Marshall Fundamental, and urge you to kindly pay prompt attention to getting several critical maintenance and repair projects underway and completed at our school, preferably before the start of the 2023-24 school year. Please see below. Our bandroom, our band teacher and students have been using the auditorium for classes for over a year because the bandroom is unsafe and need their dedicated classroom space back. The auditorium does not have HVAC, so it's cold in the winter and about to be very hot in the spring, summer, and fall. The auditorium also needs to be used for assemblies, performances, et cetera, so the band often gets displaced from its temporary classroom as well. Our softball field, the current softball field is not in a playable state. It lacks a level field, fencing dugouts, a scoreboard, lights, et cetera. The Board of Education approved plans to upgrade the field, and we need to see this to its completion. Campus safety updates, we need gates over the B building exit to Casa Grande to prevent students from sneaking out to snack shack or letting people into the school. We need the front doors fixed so that they can lock every time someone closes the doors. We need the 70 extra cameras promised so we can better monitor all of the spaces of our large campus. In addition to these projects that are currently underway, we desperately need many other facilities updates, such as... Our restrooms are in disrepair. The plumbing continuously breaks, forcing restroom closures, which makes it so students do not have regular access to restroom facilities. They must be updated. Our auditorium and cafeteria need HVAC. It's too hot in the summer and too cold in the winter to have students and staff working in these spaces. Our track and field poses safety concerns for our athletes and our PE students. Our dance room floor poses safety concerns for our ACI students and our dance students. We appreciate the board's prompt attention to these requests and to allocate the necessary funds and resources to help get this done. Thank you. Dear PUSD Board Members, I am writing to you as a concerned parent. My children are current sixth and eighth grade students at Marshall. They are loving their experience so far, thanks to the amazing teachers. There are concerns, though. Throughout this school year, I have noticed the school is falling apart. My children have come home saying bathrooms are closed, rooms are leaking, and my son does not have a place to practice. He's in band. These issues may not be a priority to you, but it is to us and my children. Like any other parent, I want my children to have the best school experience. I believe in public education and truly believe my children can succeed while at Marshall. I am the first in my family to have children in the public school system, and so far, it's been a great experience. Due to pressure from my family, my daughter applied and got accepted to a top private school in Pasadena. She ended up turning it down because she loves Marshall that much. She could have gone to a school with top-notch facilities and resources, but she chose to stay at Marshall. As parents, my husband and I were unsure of her decision, especially after seeing what these other schools had to offer. Nevertheless, we stand with her and her decision, although we do not expect top-notch facilities. We do believe our children and the children of PUSD deserve the bare minimum. A bandroom where these musicians can call their own. A softball field that is playable and one we can be proud to host other schools in competition. And campus safety updates. Necessary gates around the school to keep students in and keep strangers out. And front doors that close properly should not be something we, as parents, should be fighting to get fixed. This should be a given and be fixed ASAP. Bathrooms need to be fixed. The auditorium and cafeteria need HVAC. The track and fields needs repairs, as well as the dance floor. I know, this is a lot, but our children are worth it. They are worth investing in. Investing and approving these conditions can very well attract other families considering private education. Investing in Marshall and in our children's education is the imperative. We need to empower our students. I hope you all make the right choice. Best, Claudia Romero Caro. My name is Teri Richardson, and I am the proud parent of two Marshall Fundamental students. I feel fortunate to send my children to a sixth-through-12th grade school that boasts an all-female administration team, an extremely diverse student population, has a robust arts program, and provides a strong academic education with phenomenal teachers. Because Marshall is a sixth-through-12th grade school, my eighth grader has been afforded the opportunity to participate in a high school musical for the three years she has been in middle school, as well as to take more advanced dance and math classes. She is also transitioning into high school without the added stress of starting a new school. And as a parent, I do not worry about the ninth-grade slide. My sixth grader has the benefit of having the same amazing teacher for the four core subjects while making the jump to middle school. I feel confident that the enrollment at Marshall will continue to be steady. The enrollment data projections provided to the board bear this out. Although there is a slight decrease in enrollment this year, that blip was based on Ms. Tullumian's choice to admit less students for the school year only due to COVID and was not a reflection of a lack of demand for spots at Marshall. Next year, our numbers will be at capacity once again. As a parent volunteer for Marshall Tours, I have had the privilege of meeting with prospective Marshall families and talking with them about their school choices. This year, we had approximately 1,000 people tour our school, including a significant number of families with children who are currently homeschooled, attend charter schools, and who attend private schools. We are drawing in students who have not attended PUSD elementary schools, as well as those who have attended PUSD elementary schools. Our school is at or near capacity without anyone automatically getting into Marshall through a specialty program or from a particular elementary school. These families, who make up approximately 12% of PUSD's total enrollment, have toured all available schools and made a choice to send their children to Marshall. They have stated that they are interested in Marshall for its diversity, its campus vibe, and the record of success in academics, athletics, and the arts. They have seen the social media posts and articles in local publications and are pleasantly surprised by what PUSD has to offer. If we continue with the efforts outlined by the enrollment committee, decreasing enrollment in PUSD schools is not inevitable. All of this said, we must invest in our school facilities, and we must not do this at the current snail's pace. Our students deserve to attend safe schools with adequate facilities where they can thrive in academics, sports, and the arts. Marshall students need basic campus security measures put into place to keep them safe. They also need upgrades to restrooms so there is always access to a restroom when needed. They need the field to be fixed. This field is used by nearly every Marshall student through either PE or through sports and poses safety concerns in its current state. The band students need a classroom. The 150 students... A submission for public comment. Dear Board Members, first of all, I want to thank you for your endless service to the students and families in our district. My name is Janika Briggs, and I am the parent of three...
I'm sorry, you read that one.
Oh, this one. It's...
Walk one in, maybe we can hear another of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, it's the two of them. Okay, we're moving on. Dear PUSD Board Members, I am writing to you as a... I have this one, too. Claudia Romero Caro. I already read this one. Lori Tullumian. Okay, she's not here. She's not here. All right, we're done.
Okay, thank you very much. So that brings us down to our main event this evening. I'm going to hand it over to the DLR Group at this time. Am I not?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, that's right. Megan, sorry. I feel like I'm speaking into... Can, Megan, can you be heard?
I can see you all, and I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure we could hear you. All right. Perfect. So I think we're going to demonstrate a little bit of the instructional innovation here by doing this as a hybrid presentation. So I am happy to be joined here tonight by my co-facilitator, Megan Bennett, of the DLR Group, and also my academics partner, Dr. Reyno, so both online. And what we would like to do is front-load a lot of what you're going to be considering tonight around our facilities with the educational context. So you have likely seen several of these slides or this information in various places throughout a variety of meetings that we've had over the course of the past few months, but we wanted to be able to provide a comprehensive look as context for our consideration around the learning environment. Thank you, Amelia. I'm sorry that the words are so small, but if you draw your attention to the figure that's on the right, what we wanted to share is that we have several documents or resources that are being produced right now to represent what we are laying out as a roadmap for this school district. Obviously, the large circle represents the strategic master plan, or the strategic plan, I'm sorry, that is a school-wide guidepost for, or district-wide guidepost for all of our action services, et cetera. Within that is the document or resource that I am going to be speaking to tonight with Megan, the Educational Master Plan. And that's really a very specific set of focus areas and information around specifically teaching and learning. On the, in the yellow circle, you see that Facilities Master Plan, which you're also here to hear about tonight. And I wanted to also talk about that overlap. So in the center, you're also going to see a document that's called the Educational Specifications, which is something that was born out of both parallel projects. As we were working on the educational vision and the Facilities Master Plan team was working on the facilities information and vision, we realized that we needed to merge these two items so that we could really understand if we are asking for certain things in terms of teaching and learning, how do we manifest that in our facilities? So the Ed specifications document is sort of a third document that's a little mini appendix or add-on, or addendum, I guess I should say, to the Ed Master Plan, but its intent is to draw a transition and intersection to the Facilities Master Plan. Is everything okay? Okay. All right. So I wanted to give a little background on the process for designing our expectations and vision for teaching and learning. And we'll take you through a significant amount of feedback that we were able to garner throughout our process. This pie chart just really lays out who was involved in giving us input. And as you'll see, half, nearly half of the chart is students, because we had over 100 students involved in providing feedback to us. We also had a design team that was comprised of all those folks that you see on the right side of the pie graph, who met for 12 workshops throughout the course of several months to give us some input that Megan will actually go over in a lot more detail. So with that, let me pass it on to Megan to share about our process.
Thanks, Helen. So on this next slide, you should be seeing our student shadowing. So on this next slide, you should be seeing our student shadowing, a snapshot of some data that was collected. And that student shadowing was an opportunity for all of us on the design team to shadow a student at multiple sites, multiple grade levels for a full day. And every 15 minutes, we gathered just a snapshot of information with a form that the shadowers were filling out. They were there to watch students and watch the student experience. It was not meant to be critical of any teaching at that point. It was just truly to understand the perspective of a PUSD student, to sit in their shoes and walk in their shoes through the campuses. So again, that's just a little bit of snapshot of information showing the types of activities that were mostly... that were observed throughout that shadowing day. On the next page, you should be seeing just a snapshot of what we call the discover phase of our process. And this was research that DLR Group has done over compromising... comprising, sorry, a bunch of research that has been done by a third party, and as well as neuroscience research and educational psychology research. And what we've discovered through analysis of all of it is that the four pieces that make up our FINS framework, flexibility, individualization, naturalness in nature, and stimulation, all of those are critical pieces to the design of good learning environments and educational facilities. I just lost the video of the boardroom, so can you guys still hear me, though?
Yes.
Okay. I'll keep going here. On the next slide, our Imagine and Define process. This happened in two different workshops. So first workshop with the design team, where those that were able to shadow students got to imagine the life of a student in, say, 2032. What would school look like? What would the educational experience be for a student, say, 10 years from now? If we had the facilities and the teaching and the experiences, the furniture, all of those pieces, what could a day look like? We also did the same activity with students, and the students told us what they would like to see in their learning opportunity and their learning experience. And there's a word cloud there that shows some of the words that students came up with. You know, it's... a lot of it for them is about experiential learning through more of an inquiry-based lens, more time to intersect with their peers, more time to actually have some ownership of the day and what they choose to do. So it was an interesting opportunity for the students to share their voice in what they want to see in their academic experience in Pasadena Unified. And then the next slide, Profile of a Learner. This is in development right now, but what we asked our design team to do is think about these five topics, which are unconventional work, global impact, free agent nation, service economy, and emotional intelligence. And through looking at those five areas, we developed competencies that the students would need to be successful in these areas, because this is showing where we're headed and where students are going to be needing competencies in the future. And so from there, I'll let Helen talk a little bit about how that supports a profile of a learner.
Thanks, Megan. So this document is likely very familiar to everyone watching. We have an existing graduate profile, and part of the plan that we have really laid out in the Ed master plan is that it is very timely that we update this. With a lot of the feedback that Megan just went over, you are hearing about innovation and a different way of thinking and a different way of processing information, which then necessitates a much more elevated instruction and learning environment and design. So we have a crosswalk of feedback that is contributing to some of these changes, but we will take our time to make sure that we involve additional educational partners before solidified changes are made. So we just wanted to let you know that that is a piece of the Ed master plan, that this particular document is something that we will work in partnership with our community to continue to update and make sure that it's relevant according to this vision. So with that, we actually created a vision statement for the Ed master plan. I know that this is separate than the overarching strategic plan's vision, but it's in alignment in the sense that this is really speaking to what are the items that we're really calling out, that we need in our classrooms and in our learning spaces and really in our school communities, because we're seeing that the whole entire school community is seen as a learning space. You'll notice that words like learner-centered, life-ready, flexible, resilient, inquiry-based, differences, and then emotional and physical health are appearing. We noticed that this is resonant with some of the other committees that operated throughout the strategic plan process, including culture and climate, including the engagement committee, several other groups and design teams additionally had resonating features. And so we believe that we've captured a lot of these overlapping desires. Our four focus areas then became learner-centeredness, flexible spaces, which I will actually come back to, because I think it has most of the critical information that we need for our attachment to the facilities master plan, well-being, taking care of the entire whole child, and community partnership, which is bringing in the rich resources that we have in this region to enrich what we do as educational designers. But let me go back to flexible spaces really quickly. A lot of what we've discussed has the notion of being agile, not just physically, but mentally. So much of what we've learned coming out of the pandemic has been about quick decision-making, about adjusting to student needs in real time, and about having an urgency for things that we see arise in the classroom when students need it. Some of that is a learning model in terms of workshop and differentiation and small group instruction. Some of that is the physical spaces being barriers to making some of that fluidity happen. And so what we really want to talk about tonight is a unity in terms of what our teachers are really wanting to be able to do with their students, and then creating the learning environment spaces to enable them to do it, so that they can really apply their mental agility to that physical space. And so one of the things that we heard a lot about, I mean, you hear so much of it, doesn't necessarily have to do with infrastructure. Some of it does. But there are aspects of this that are simply furniture and equipment. And so I think that when we go into the next piece of this conversation, we just want to make sure that we've laid out the context for what the feedback is really drawing up from the community, from parents, from students, from teachers alike, to really say, in order for us to actualize this vision for education and instruction and learning, this is really how we would ideally see our learning environment. So to that end, we will be... or, well, we're in pretty much production mode. We have a draft of a master, educational master plan that lays out all of this information with a lot more great detail. This is just a screenshot of the front page and the table of contents, so you can see what's in it. And we'll make sure to have that available to our board members following this meeting. But we're also going to talk about an additional addendum document that, again, we unearthed through this process with necessary, and that's the educational specifications document. So with that, I'm going to pass it back over to Megan. Oh, I'm so sorry. Sorry, Megan, let me do one more context slide, and then I'll hand it back. The reason why we discovered that the educational specifications were needed is one of the activities that we went through was the learning connections. It was critical for us to take the design team and our feedback, or our student feedback participants, to understand that it wasn't just about coming and asking for, "I need desks that look like this," or "I need us to have outdoor classrooms in every single school," but that we had to anchor every facilities or environmental ask, all the way back to what kind of learning do we want to see? So we began with that core of what learning do we want to see, and therefore, what type of teaching would we expect, or would teachers create? Therefore, what spaces would be required in order to facilitate that? And then along that, what furniture, what technology, and what safe and equitable environments could we create in order for that to happen? So that's the process of thought that we followed, and now I'll hand it over to Megan to go into those specifications.
Okay, just so that everyone is familiar with this terminology, educational specifications really are the link or the bridge between the educational vision, the academic programs, and the learning activities to the spaces and the environment, the physical parts of our schools. And it describes the key spaces that are needed to be able to achieve our academic goals, the physical relationships between spaces, as architects, we call those adjacencies, and the required organizational... that is, the required organizational adjacencies. It should also specifically state how the design features then support the teaching and learning methodology. And so the educational specifications, on the next slide, you'll see the table of contents, and just it shows you what we did to create this document. We actually met with multiple focus groups across the district with various teaching and staff, site administrators, many, many hours of notes of meetings with those groups telling us what their needs are. We also took this document, and we aligned it to those four focus areas that Helen just shared. So we can call out now how your educational spaces should support learner-centeredness, flexibility, wellness, and community partnerships. Then we also created some very basic diagrams that show the adjacencies in terms of what departments need to be near each other, what other types of spaces need to be located next to each other, and how do they relate to each other? How might teachers use those spaces? How might students use those spaces? And then we also looked at space type sheets. In other words, if we sell... if we call out that this is a classroom space, what activities then do we anticipate would be supported in those spaces, and what does a space need for functioning? And then we also looked at the program, which is really just a overall spreadsheet of square footages and what kinds of programs happen in those spaces. So on the next slide, you can see there, we took those four focus areas from our educational master plan, and we aligned this educational specifications document to those four areas. I'm not going to read all those bullet points, but you can see that we took some intentionality around how those spaces align with those four areas. The next slide talks a little bit about this, a term we call learning communities, and that could be a grouping of spaces. It could be a learning studio, also known as a classroom. It could be teacher planning spaces and group rooms, some open collaboration, and together that is considered a learning community. This is a bit of a shift from where you all are at right now, but the idea is that this allow... this learning community idea allows for those academic programs, the types of teaching that you all want to see and that you've outlined in your educational master plan. On slide 18, some of the... the next slide, some overall themes. This came again from those focus groups that we worked with, that we got feedback from. These are some of the things that came out from various groups, such as prioritization of outdoor access and learning areas, inclusion of community spaces, so more places are needed for family and community and meeting opportunities, centralization of student services, for example, like a hub of some type, where you have multiple services available for students and the communities, more sped inclusion into those learning neighborhoods or learning communities, expansion of typical library services, and then a mention of all-learner or inclusive restrooms as well. There's some photographs here just to show you what it could look like. So looking at some of these images, it's just to inspire as well as excite you for what could be a possibility for what a learning community could look like. You see some really flexible furniture, non-traditional furniture. There's definitely a lot of supervision that can happen when you have spaces that are open and transparent, such as this. Lots of great daylighting as well. On the next slide, where you see, again, non-traditional furniture, students actually are excited when they see the furniture that fits for them, that works for them. It makes them excited to be in those spaces. Again, some great opportunities for display and daylight. On the next slide, this is just an example of, say, a neighborhood or an area of spaces, some adjacent diagrams here showing a classroom connected to a small group room, connected to a sped room, connected to storage, maker space, and even some teacher planning or wellness rooms. And this is just, again, meant to show how those spaces could be configured in a traditional sort of double-loaded corridor that many of your buildings are, that have those types of hallways. And so this is an opportunity to see how could it be perhaps reconfigured into some of these spaces? Again, the next slide or image is just to show, here's a... this is a traditional high school that they took some space, double-loaded corridor on either side, but took this space as an opportunity to put in some collaborative furniture, some areas for students to connect and work together at the wall there, just an opportunity to provide more supervision in a different setting. But again, these are all adjacent to classrooms, so it just is an interesting place for students to spend some of that time working together. The next slide, again, showing some unique types of furniture, some dry erase surface furniture, flexible partitions are also something that might be considered to create those spaces, multiple teaching walls. And then the next piece is example of our programming and how we looked at the class sizes for various programs and the capacities that would be needed for those. Again, showing an adjacent diagram there of what could be a student hub, where you have a student union connected to perhaps the library or health area, career and college connection to this hub, perhaps even some outdoor spaces. So just showing again what could be for a potential set of adjacent spaces. And then the final slide there, or the next slide with those three images, again, just showing you inspirational type of photos of what could be for something like a student hub or a student services area, where you have non-traditional furniture, you have color, you have daylighting, you have a space where students feel welcomed and feel like this is their place to collaborate, to get creative and to work together, again, with plenty of opportunities for that supervision for students as well. And so Helen, I'll leave... turn it back over to you, because I thought this was kind of an interesting way to share about our team process.
Sounds good. Thank you, Megan. And I just want to add that that process of developing those educational specifications that Megan just went through involved an additional 11 focus groups with about just under 60 additional folks, who were teachers, counselors, essentially the folks who will use the spaces, in addition to some student reps, mostly from the high school, I do have to admit, who were also able to give us some feedback, specific to particular areas like administrative space, classroom space, outdoor areas, athletic spaces, et cetera. So it's been a really thoughtful process. It's been a very involved process with folks in all corners of, you know, interest. And we asked them what words or phrases come to mind when you think about the Ed master plan, the process, et cetera? And really abundantly, the word collaborative and student-centered and hopeful came up. So those are your most powerful words. And so I just want to leave with this idea that we promised our design team and all of the folks who gave us feedback that this wasn't a process that we were just gathering and we were going to make into a pretty document, which it will be a pretty document, but we want it to be a live and acted upon document. And one thing that I will say in particular, since so many of the teachers were here tonight speaking, is that we put those expectations to them anyway. And if we can match the learning environment for what we ask of them throughout the day and for what we ask of students to show up and commit when we engage in teaching and learning, it would be just a wonderful setting for everyone.
All right. Good evening, President Bailey, Superintendent McDonald, I'm cabinet. Members of the board, Kevin Fleming, back again. So I'm going to continue this conversation, but I guess the most important thing I wanted to do is let's look at today's goals as soon as Michael catches up with me. I think you're fine. Okay, next. Oh. Here. Okay. The reason why we just kind of reviewed were the educational... The reason why we just kind of reviewed where the educational plan is because incorporating the educational plan into the facility master plan has implications moving forward. And it has implications in how you prioritize and then how you actually implement the changes at each of the schools. We also wanted to look at the approach to capacity alignment, and this is just a different way, we're just looking at how can you reduce capacity on a campus wide basis instead of a district wide basis. So I'll explain what that means as we move forward. Giving you a visualization of the metrics that we've had compiled that may help with the prioritization of projects, which comes first, which comes second, as we go through the, the changes. And then let's establish our next date that we can get together and discuss further what we're going to do, and I'll let you know what I will do in the meantime between now and then. So, did I do that or do? Okay. So just looking at your strategic pillars, we just wanted to comment that obviously two of them are directly related to the facility master plan, the other three are tangentially related and will influence them next. So what I want to do right off the bat, kind of always talking about it, when we talk about transforming a facility or re-establishing an educational plan into a district, it has a, it has a direct implication on how you approach implementing facility master plans. So this is a school, this is Huntington Beach, it's not that far from you, albeit I would hardly consider this historical, it was a huge transformation that implemented their ed spec and master or educational plan. So a couple of shots of what it was two years ago. That's the office admin, we can go through the library, I believe, there's a couple of shots. The library was open 60s floor plan, horrible, no acoustics. Computer lab, who has those anymore? Just was the question we asked. And next, these are construction to show you what happens. It's torn down to the bones, basically rebuilt with a different educational program, but what it also accomplishes is all new systems, new plumbing, new fixtures, new electrical, new low voltage systems, you know, everything's new for another 50 years of use because quite frankly, a facility that's between 50 and 100 years old has probably had way too much duct tape and there's no more parts available on eBay to purchase to fix the old air conditioning systems. So this is actually what it is now and Michael. And this was done by a parent, it wasn't done by us. You got to actually hit on the triangle when it has a little hand. There you go. So this is a STEM school with an overlay to it that they reinvented their educational program. This is where Megan was talking about a very flexible, open interior space, very student And this is accomplished in exactly one year of construction. They have an esports program, which is pretty amazing. Culinary arts in middle school. Jim, that kind of, I think gets us the idea, Michael, we can move on. Yeah, so kind of give, kind of giving you the idea of what this, what a transformed school might look like and what it entails in the construction process. Now, keep in mind, that doesn't mean that schools like for safety and security issues and maintenance issues wouldn't also be proceeding at the same rate that we're pursuing the, what I call transformative school projects. Just so everybody can understand what a process takes because there is a lot of stuff to get through on the front end to get the approvals and the bids and the materials ordered in order to start construction. And obviously, when you're doing something of this magnitude and scale, it probably needs to fall on the summer break in order to move a school to a temporary location while the school is being transformed so they can move back to the location. So this is the schedule that it would take to get us there. And even at this rate, it means decisions would need to be made in a timely manner. So I just want to put it out there, architects cannot do miracles in eight months to get a project ready for construction. It's well over a year to go through all the processes, especially with new programming. Next. I just want to touch on declining enrollment because this is not specifically a Pasadena problem. Pasadena's issue is more your capture rate from your existing students, but nationwide we have declining enrollment. State of California has declining enrollment. The only areas that are not experiences in are areas that have new development going on such as the High Desert, the Beaumont down in that area up there where the housing is being produced at a cheaper rate. Part of what we're having here is the birth rates have been decreasing, I have the data over the years, and it's a steady decline and it's been shown that way where you're not replacing the parents. The capture rate is less than 50%. I think there's, there's a point, and everybody's been making it here tonight, that we can actually address that and try to do it in a positive way, but understanding it's not something that's going to happen overnight because it didn't occur overnight. Your existing residents are staying here. This is a multi-faceted problem. Nobody can afford to move, nobody wants to sell a house and buy a new one with seven, eight percent interest rates, but historically, your older residents are choosing to live here and not move out of the community for other younger generation to move in. So that's just, I think, a testament to how beautiful it is to live here. And this trend is projected at this point to continue, not just for Pasadena, which is true, but nationwide. The baby boom generation has, has grown out. All right, next. Now I just want to touch on the reason why we had done the whole equity study, the whole overlay of the district and how the history and the past have affected where we are today was in direct reflection to understanding that accommodating students regardless of how you're intent to reconfigure schools, consolidate schools, or address schools on their campus wide specific basis has got support from our attorney general. And then I thought it would be interesting, I'll do it real quick, hopefully the sound comes through. This is a presentation that was given at the cash.
This is the video from it.
Yeah, from the cash conference in February. That really kind of tells you exactly why these issues are important.
The neighborhoods where we grow up can determine the trajectory of our lives, from the money we earn to how long we live. And it's not by accident. America was built this way. And Jesus Hernandez has mapped those in its body, block by block.
I was able to measure every social ill in this city.
Like what?
Where are your dropouts from high school? Where are the people who get the flu? Where are the people who use more water than others?
His work has shown that all of it connects back to one factor over and over again, and that factor is race.
You have these spatial patterns that represent geography of where we shifted our people over the period of 100 years in developing the city.
We'll send it out. The tenor of this is, is the, the whole overreaching issue of going back to all of the policies, practices that have been put in place to further oppress people that have been oppressed through the generations and how all of these factors still play out today in policies that we implement in school districts, public realms in general, park locations where we choose to close schools, all these things still play in and they have a history and racism and, and a past. So it's a very thorough kind of research and it's very eye opening, so I encourage you to look at this if you can. Historic demographics, so I just want to, this goes back 10 years and looks forward seven years. The decline's gone from, you know, you guys, you went from 18,000 students to a projected 13, 11? Yeah. So, and again, this has to do with birth rates. You're not necessarily just losing students because of poor education, you're, it's, it's a nationwide trend. All these schools were built in response to baby boomers that was bubbling through the United States all at one time. Next. And then I just want to show you, they finally posted the 22, 23 CDE updated numbers from the seabeds of October, which kind of show, and I did redo this to just show non-charter schools, only the influence, were pretty much on target with how much we had predicted to lose in one year from last year's demographic study. And then to reinforce, we are redoing or updating the demographics based on this year's enrollment numbers or last year's enrollment numbers, but the study takes about four weeks to complete from now. Next. This kind of shows the birth rates, and this is by zip code. It's the way it was organized. I do not know where these zip codes occur, but if you can look down the list of total birth rates, you can see the decline year after year after year after year as we go through this. Next. And this kind of shows the capture rate of birth rates to kindergarten or TK now as we go through. And I think this is the target that we could actually improve on the demographics in the district. This is what's showing that we have about 48, 49% of eligible students that do not attend PUSD. Next. The student mobility, now I pulled this up, this is the elementary schools and, and then mobility moving through to the high schools. Red means you're losing, blue means you're stable, green means you're gaining. So obviously, the popularity of your secondary education programs is keeping and attracting students, which has led me to believe that maybe concentrated effort on the early education component and capture rate might start with newborns and young parents. Next. District wide mobility, this kind of, again, it shows the same things, but it shows it over time from 2010 all the way through to today. The mobility factors have not changed much over time. So it's kind of been there, at least with the window that we're looking at here. Again, one, it means the cohort is moving consistently through the gray levels, less than one means you're losing some, and more than one means you're gaining. All right. Resident students, I just wanted to point out that the last column here, the percentage of PUSD students attending school of residence means they live in the attendance area. It's a very low rate, you have a lot of mobility in your district interacting, people going to different schools, applying, and a lot of that has to do with your different programs and fundamental schools and open enrollments. I want to talk about the capacity and how we determine it real quick because there's always some question. We, we're doing a snapshot in time, basically. Yes, we want capacity per school because it helps us with the planning process, but we also want to know it district wide. So to determine how a class space is being utilized, the amount of surplus, we instituted what we call the state loading standards, and this is the, the way the California Department of Education and the Office of Public School Construction looks at a classroom loaded with students for both how you would expand the opportunities for education for growth or how you get money through modernization programs and matched at the state. So this is the way they load it. You don't get more if you have more kids in a classroom. This also helps us by not overloading classrooms based on district standards, which are different than the state standards. So we don't get an unrealistic picture of reality based on district standards, which may not, they're not consistent, obviously not every seventh grade classroom has 30.25 students. Then the classrooms, we do not count. I want to make sure everybody's aware of that specialty programs such as music, art, STEM, anything that would be serving the students that are there in the classroom already, they're excluded from the capacity count because we do not want them to go away and just be loaded with students. Your average amount of specialty classrooms on a typical campus is about 20% of the actual classroom count. So we actually did that metric real quick. And then I got this wrong, I did not correct it today, but we further reduced the capacity count for our master plan capacity by 15%, and this is directly related while I wanted the educational plan to be understood at least in its inception. Because when we overlay the need of student centered learning, things like collaboration spaces, like expanded wellness centers, like family and parent welcoming centers, and doing an expanded administration so we can correct the, or enhance the safety and security to a single point of entry and control into the historic buildings, also counseling and other activities that will actually take up about 15% of the current just used classroom educational space. So if we were to go in and do that, that transformation like I did in the video for you, you would get 15% less classroom space, but you're going to be utilizing it for a different educational model. If that makes sense? This helps us, I think, in a very good and wonderful way. Next. So where are we at now? So in capacity, right now, we have surplus for about 5,000 students. That's just looking at your whole district overall, you know? And then if we're looking ahead to 2028 with a continued decline, we may be looking at in another 3,000 students, 2, 3,000 students of additional surplus capacity. And this just means classrooms are not going to be utilized based on the cohort traveling through and the capture rate that we talked about. Next. So I did a master plan capacity study, and this is big picture. We're currently looking at what the cost of these are. So by the next meeting, I will have a full analysis of all the cost implications of this master plan. This is reducing two, two items only. Relocatables, which as you know me well, they're a target of mine all the time. I don't think they're great for educating kids and they have no collaborative capabilities whatsoever. So if we just removed relocatables, it will reduce capacity by 1,400, I think if I can read that number. And then if we look at the 15% overlay of, of overlaying the educational plan into the programming and reconstruction or reimagining of the school, we can take another 27? Is that Michael? I can't read from here. So for the master plan capacity in the future, 2028, that was 7,200 on the previous slide, it's reduced just by looking at a campus wide capacity study reduction per campus to down to 3,242. Now there's other things as we go into this that will come into effect. There are going to be some campuses that show they need more space because we're implementing a broader program. That would get in addition to that campus or reconfiguration. There are, all of your historic campuses, the core would be to preserve the historic buildings. There are other buildings on those campuses that may or may not really need to be there. They could be not surplus, but they could be found for other uses. Or we could, if they're in poor facility conditions, opt to maybe remove them from the campus and increase the exterior play area and green areas that we've talked about as well. I think I'm almost done. So what I did here, these are a series of for your benefit, and I hope you can get a copy of this and look at it, kind of showing where your schools are in relationship to the metrics that we've been talking about. So this is your elementary schools, this shows the future capacity and the current capacity of each one of the schools, and it's overlaid on what we call the heat map, showing where your population resides for those particular students. So I have one for elementary, one for middle, and one for high school. So you can go through the three of them. And if the school had more than one grade span between them, I included them on both maps or all three maps. The one school I did not include was the CIS because it's a little bit vague to me how one plans for that program right now, even though I have some ideas for the master plan. Next, Michael. These I'll go through rather quickly, but I've mapped out the schools and what their percentage of socially economically disadvantaged students are at each school, so you can kind of get a feel, and then I color coded it so you can see which schools have the most diverse or are serving the most needed population just graphically in your district. And I apologize that I couldn't put this on top of the heat maps, these are, I did these all today. Next. This shows the facility condition index. This is basically what is the quality and shape of your facilities and the projected need for maintenance and operations continued over the next 20 years. The percentage is simply the division of the proposed maintenance requirements in terms of dollars based on the facility condition assessment divided by an assumed evaluation of replacement if you were to build a brand new school. So once that number starts approaching or exceeding 10%, it's getting to the point where you, where we know that it's in, we're, it's the duct tape era, let's put it that way. There's a lot of stuff that needs to be repaired.
Can you just say those, can you just say those two things again? I don't know if that's on. The, the numerator and the denominator?
The numerator, oh, you're making me think back.
Well, whatever, you can say whatever you said.
The facility condition index is the projected cost for maintaining and replacing systems based on what we have, the, the facility assessment numbers divided systems based on what we have, the facility assessment numbers, divided by, and I think that's where it gets the percentage, the actual replacement value if you were to build a school new. And that number is probably extremely low for today's standards, but it's consistent, and it gives you a consistent percentage when you're talking about an FCI. So the key is here is, once you're approaching or exceeding ten percent, and I think the numbers I include here are actually the ten-year number, and there's a 20-year number. The 20-year numbers are extremely critical because it shows that we actually get way out there. I got a printout of what the three categories are. We always choose the center because it's the center of a program, a 10-year expanded program. But that's a condition. Next. I'm almost done, guys. School attendance area. This is kind of illustrating what percentage of the students are attending the school within their neighborhood, basically. I'm going to go next. Okay, kind of showing the historic designation. So this is segregated into four sections, so you can see the, the nice purply-blue is designated historic buildings. It's on a registry. It's already been, it's there. It's a historic. The green ones were previously identified as potentially historic, but they have yet to show up on any register. The red or the pinkish rosy color is stuff that our historic analysts that went out and did all the surveys found to be potentially historic and could be on a register but currently are not. And then the blue ones, there's four of them, just are not historic at this point. I thought it'd be interesting, Measure TT, I gathered the funding with the help of Michael here, so that we could give a physical look at where the money basically went, what schools and how much they attained. And then finally, I did the potential state funding on the schools. The ones that I have highlighted, I think, have enrollment numbers or things that might change the outcome for better or for worse. It's kind of notes to Kevin in the future as we progress into this, but just, it may be of consideration as we're looking at the importance of what the prioritization are of the metrics to kick off the program. So with that, our, our next steps here, we're currently kind of drawing out the master plans based on the data we received from our input sessions and our visits, and obviously from the feedback we've received from you and the executive leadership team. We'll complete those with costs that are associated with each one. These will be interactive. You can see, like, if we just modernized all the buildings in our, and did do no site work or anything, you'll be able to slice and dice it so that you can actually look at how to spend the money effectively. The idea if, and this is an if, I'm not saying it's an absolute, but if we're going to implement a educational plan with the required facilities that would deem we want to transform a school, we would have to be looking at what an interim school site looks like for the year that the school would need to be vacated. So that's a very important element if we're going to move forward, and can we prepare that interim site by the time that we need to go? That's why we're putting it up front, because there's always things that you want to do, you know, such as test out technology for the new schools that are opening up, put it in the interim campus. New furniture, anything that you're looking at gets a training period with that school. How many of them is the big question? I think we can go up to three, is what I'm looking at, but I think I need some help with Michael and you guys of how many we want to tackle at one time. And then, how do we prioritize the projects that would begin? Who's on first, kind of thing, so that we can start implementing contracts, getting the study groups together, getting the program sessions together, and the design and documents and approvals and bidding in order to start the process of construction? And that would require, obviously, getting the architect selections or aligned with projects. We have a shortlist of architects. We can assign or get them to respond pretty quickly. And then, I think that's it, right? Okay. How did I do in time? All right. I hope this helped and made some sense, and if you guys have conversation and questions, which I'm anticipating you may. Yes, sir?
Well, I have about a million, but I'm going to limit myself to start because I know other people have things they want to say. So when I looked at the facilities master plan website, a point of clarification, when you talk about the state matching and the state number and then the district matching, the state number is not inclusive of the district matching. So like, if it says the site can get $20 million in state funds, but the district's got a $13.4 million match, what that means is...
Add it together.
Right. So the state will match our first 13.4, and then they'll give us seven.
Well, the state match is not 50/50, it's 60/40.
Okay. So I think I really would encourage all of the board members to take that particular point in question because it makes a massive difference on the funds available. Now, I do want to point out some wrinkles. The first one is back in 2008, when we passed the master plan before I was on the board, I think before, you weren't even on the board until, you were? Yeah. So back then, the whole facility master plan was based on the assumption that state matching funds would be there, and then they were not. So very shortly after the facilities master plan was created, which was part of selling the bond, a third of the funds that were in the plan just disappeared, which severely negatively impacted the public perception of the effectiveness of Measure TT because the, and you could talk to anybody who was a parent back there, including me, and my kids were at Longfellow at the time, the narrative amongst the parents was, we were promised X, we never got it. I always tried to push back on that a little bit because it wasn't really a promise. It was budget based upon state funds, which then disappeared. But it does mean that we, as a board, I think we need to be very aware of the state matching funds, the stuff that's up in 2025, which I went through the site and listed them all, Muir, Elliott, Field, Norma Coombs, PHS, Hamilton, and Octavia Butler. Those all have funds available in 2025, like, big funds. I skipped over the couple that had small matching funds available in 2022. Those funds are probably going to be there. That money's in the state budget right now.
Just want to be cautious because I don't want another 2008 repetition here.
Right.
I don't know what happened in 2008. If you apply for state match money under modernization grant, you will get it once the money becomes available, even if you have to wait 10 years.
Right. So that's the other factor, is that we may wind up budgeting based on a state matching fund.
But not getting the state.
Complete the project, but then not see the money for six or eight years, which impacts our cash flow. Now, we, because we're only talking about doing three or four schools, maybe in any given one year, this bond is going to last us a little while because we have a lot of schools to cover. But it does mean that this is a, we want to be careful as a board that we're not handing a problem to the board in 2032, right? We have to make smart decisions now. So I wanted to bring that point up. The one, the two wrinkles that I found when I was looking at the matching funds is, out of all the schools, interestingly, Madison basically has none, no state matching funds.
I don't understand it myself, and I am looking into that. It doesn't make sense. It would indicate that you either, you applied for state money for Madison, and it's not qualified?
Which is possible.
But I can't find record of that.
Okay. And then the other one is, I couldn't find numbers on McKinley. Is that because we don't have them, or is it just not in the?
It's another, I'm looking into McKinley.
You're looking into it, okay.
They're on there too, but these were done, it's, they were qualified under what they, I forgot the terms, but it's like a baseline that they established at a certain date. These are all based on that baseline, and at that point, McKinley and/or Madison may not have been included in the baseline.
Right.
But if you change the baseline, your new monies will be based on your current enrollment. So if it was established back in 2014, we want to do our best to maintain that.
Right.
That's the whole point.
The other two points that I'll make before I give up the mic is, first of all, if we do a transformative approach, which I'm very supportive of, I think that's exactly what we should do. A big part of this is, I live on a campus that has a lot of old buildings as part of my day job, and I've seen how much money it costs to make changes, minor cosmetic changes to buildings that were built in 1950, 1940, 1930, versus the sort of approach you're advocating, which is basically, got the bill, it's a teardown. So I have a natural inclination to go with that approach, but if we're doing that three schools at a time, we're going to change three schools, and then the following year, we're going to change three schools, and then the following year, we're going to change three schools. Well, now we've got nine schools in the district that are considerably newer and nicer than the rest of our facilities, and that will change how the parents choose to enroll. That'll, that'll change our, which people are going to their neighborhood school. So we need to keep that in, into account because it will, the parents will sort the district for us once we start doing this, which is one reason why I don't, I personally don't need a 30-year master plan for the entire district tomorrow, because once we start implementing it, things are going to change. The last thing I want to bring up, and then I will pass the mic, is based on the birth rates and our zip code, I have a real problem with the 50% capture rate number because I think a big bulk of that is people actually moving out of the zip code before their kids get to school age, as opposed to choosing to go private. But even if you assume that they all stay, and we're only getting half of them, just the decline in the birth rate would mean our capture rate would have to go from 50% to almost 70% starting this year for us to have no declining enrollment. I think that's probably an unrealistic expectation. So we have to look at the reality that our district is going to be declining just because of the number of babies for at least the next five or six years. So I will now surrender the mic and let other people talk.
Hi. I'm sorry, but I had to run my daughter on an errand, and I missed the whole presentation. But I read through it before I got here. So I have two things, and one is about the declining enrollment. So I went back and looked at our recording from when we did school closures, and there was conversation about leaving all the four high schools open, but there was a comment that if we left all four high schools open, we, the board at that time, was going to have to start bringing in new students. And that statement was made, but I do not believe that this board set out to do that. So I'm just letting that sit here because that is something that's very important to do. We can't have a district that shrinks down to nothing. We absolutely have to do the work to bring in students. So that said, I was looking at capacity projection, and on Norma Coombs, it says the capacity is 689. And this is interesting to me because we brought this up in our enrollment committee. When this slide came up about capacity, and we were going through capacity, a lot of the principals said, well, we don't have that capacity because a lot of our classrooms are now art rooms and music studios. And so we had this huge conversation, so it was interesting to see this on this presentation. And I noted that it also says classrooms not counted, specialty learning, art, music, STEM lab. But when I spoke with the principal at Norma Coombs, he did say that he was confused by this because they currently have 302 students, and the 689 would represent double the capacity. And he thinks they have room to grow by about 160, and that's if he can add another kindergarten class or have two more kindergarten classes. So my concern is that I really want to make sure that the principals are clear on these numbers and that we know exactly the capacity that the schools have. That's an important thing for me. Thank you.
Yes?
I have a number of questions as well. The first one's, as we're talking about data, I don't know that I am confident that we have good data, because we have enrollment data, we have census data, ideally, we have these projections about what we think the enrollment decline is going to be, we have projections of what we think enrollment is right now, and I'm not sure that all of these things match. So right now, I am not comfortable with the fact that we have good information to make good decisions. That's my first issue. Can you tell me more about the characteristics and the criteria that you're using to develop your FCI? Like, what data points are you using to create your FCI?
Each campus, Michael, can you click on the pusdplan.org? I think you have internet access, correct?
So are we talking about things like the year the school was built? Any major improvements on?
No, no, no. It's much more, it's much more entailed than that. Each one of the campuses that you go to?
Do you want me to finish my question?
Oh, I thought you wanted me to answer what that...
Well, I'm just asking about what other features or criteria were used to create this number, because I'm not sure about, that it was included in the presentation.
There's a complete document for each campus. That's why I wanted to make sure you knew where it was located? That assesses the facility condition and projects it out for 20 years, for every campus.
Okay.
So that's what was used to compile the FCI.
Thank you. I'll take a look at that again. Is 50 years the new lifespan for construction at this point?
I think 50 years is about as far as I can, I can predict. Historically, 50, if you're beyond 50 years, you're doing pretty good.
Way back when, most schools back in the early 1900s were always designed for a 50-year period with the assumption at the end of that 50-year period that the associated district would have in-pound accounts and provide for a plan to tear down and replace those buildings at the end of the 50 years. And of course, that's not where the reality we came to. So a typical design life for a school building is 50 years.
And I think my last question is, looking at your implementation schedule, the slides aren't numbered, so I can't point you to a slide number.
My apologies.
But am I reading this correct, where it says that you have construction documents that happen in September of '24, and that you go to DSA review and approval in January of '25, and you start bidding an award in March? Does that assume that you come out of DSA in 60 days?
Those are the end dates, I believe. DSA is about four months.
In what life?
I...
I work for Los Angeles Unified School District. I spend a lot of time tracking facilities, projects that go to DSA for approval. I have never had a project come back in four months. Try like 10 months, minimal.
No, I've just submitted a project in December 12th of last year, and we got the DSA stamp Thursday last week, and it's a full modernization, just like we were talking about. I'm doing another one where I actually got the DSA to review and approve a project, and it was 45 days. Not huge projects, but they did review and approve them and stamp them out. But these are San Diego, which I think you're in LA. Doug runs his show, a little bit different than the way Craig runs his down in San Diego, but...
I just think that this is a very ambitious timeline that we're looking at in terms of this being something we can project and sort of plan to.
Point taken, and you're, and I'm projecting it on myself as well, so I would be more than happy to extend it, but I think it needs to extend the other way. I don't want the deadlines to be missed. I would like the submission dates to be updated.
Oh, I understand of wanting to have some urgency, but I just don't know how fully realistic this is.
Okay.
Just in terms of our completion date.
You are going to be a wealth of benefit being part of LAUSD as this process unfolds.
Because talking about modernizations, I've got $280 million modernizations happening, and this is not a teardown.
Yep.
That's been three and a half years in the making already, and they're still not done. Looking at another, probably two years of construction.
Did they vacate the schools?
No.
That's, that's always the big issue. You can go a lot faster, and it's much safer on the students.
Understand.
Yep.
So based on the presentation, it seems as though there's a very strong lean toward the transformation model. Is this a decision point that we're being asked to make tonight, or has there been input given prior? I'm not on the facilities committee, so I'm not privy to, like, all of the conversations that's happened there. Just wanted to know if I have missed a step in the process in terms of, like, where we are and how we got to this, being the kind of recommend for us to react and respond to.
It's exactly what you just said, recommend and react to. The idea from our point of view is, we're doing a strategic plan that incorporates an educational master plan and a facility plan, and they need to talk to each other. So if the educational plan would like to be implemented in its true intent with a more collaborative environment... like to be implemented in its true intent with a more collaborative environment for students, that's what I'm assuming might be a, an avenue we want to pursue.
And is there also a plan to do a crosswalk between this facilities plan and the educational master plan, to see where the alignment is, make sure that they are kind of rowing in the same direction?
I would have to have the district respond, because we're actually just, we're doing both, but I don't know where the intent of how the facility needs to align is and what the future is. I'm, we've done this in other districts, the whole, you know, transforming and reimagining what their schools are. So I'm just using that as a model for discussion tonight. Yes, sir.
That's all for me for now. Thank you.
Oh, yes, that, so that's the idea, that there would be crosswalk between the educational master plan and the facilities master plan. Because the, you know, the idea here is that, and we've said it before in the past, that instruction drives construction. So the educational master plan should drive what we do in terms of our facilities master plan.
I would also like to say that there were adjustments made in the capacity studies after we discussed the educational master plan and the facilities plan together, because it came out loud and clear that these wellness spaces and group collaboration spaces are very important to the students and teachers, community members that worked on the ed master plan. So there, there have been some slight adjustments made.
Hi. So every now and then, I get the pleasure of teaching research methods. And one of my favorite books to teach is How to Live with Statistics. And basically, the core understanding of that book is on how to use the, amplify the importance of statistic significance of the data that you present. And basically, that the analysis is as good as the data that you present. And so in that line, the first thing that I want to address is the issue of racial equity. When we look at racial equity in education, even when you look at racial equity in the city, one of the principal pillars of achieving such equity is desegregation. And in that, I would like to say that campuses that attract district-wide, that have a district-wide attendance, and blend a combination of the district boundaries are more aligned with our principles of desegregation than some of the other models of enrollment. And so in a way, I resent the narrative of this presentation that makes it seem as if some of the decisions are based, are racialized. And I'm not saying that they're not. I just think that they're racialized in a different way that this data constructs that narrative. So the second thing that I want to say with regards to that is that when I see this data, specifically a comparison of the slide, I cannot find the number of the slide anymore, but the slide that shows measured TT funding, and I see it in comparison to the slide that shows facility conditions, and I hear you talk about the projected cost divided by the replacement value. What I see is a history of the funding certain school sites to the result of their detriment. So when you look at how the money of measured TT was spent, and you identify the lowest schools with assignment at that time, and then you compare that against the comparison of proportion and condition of the schools, we can see that there has been a history of identifying the schools that we're not going to invest on, and then making efforts to close those schools. And you can see that not only in the results, right? So some of the schools that were, where we invested the lease during measured TT are now closed campuses, and some of the ones are aligned in potential state funding sites as spaces for potential relocation, right? So when we look at racialized decisions, I also want to look at the...
I want to make sure it's correct, though. One, it was potential relocation of funds, not schools.
Right. Okay.
I just want to make sure that's clear, because I am no way intimating school closures.
Okay. So I apologize for my mistake. In any case, what I see is a narrative that really contests some of the story that we're telling today. I also have comments on the specific slides. But I think that one of the most important things that I want to say, left, that I want to still say, ah, shoot. I have the phrasing written, but I was translating in my previous meeting, and I shit, tear it apart when I was translating. So, so I'm going to try to recreate my notes. But basically, is that buildings are important, and an analysis of numbers and capacity and space and resident is important. But it has to be grounded with the academic programs that are happening inside of the programs. Because when you look at the chart that looks at attrition rate, or how are we able to keep our students? We lose most of our students between kindergarten and first. That is a significant loss. So I want to know, how, how are the academic programs and the academic offering in relationship to this data of the numbers and the spaces and the buildings? Because I think that those two things are very important. I come from a place with very low resources, where we don't care about the building, we care about what happens inside. And I know that that is counterintuitive for an architect. So I actually, I'm going to skip my comments on the actual slides, but I just want to make a note, and that says that any plan on consolidation has to come with a comprehensive plan for the vacant properties.
So thank you for this presentation, and I know we'll post it back up, and you'll put, it'll be the one with the newer slides, right, with the, some of the number corrections?
We'll try to get it posted in a format that you can get the PowerPoint, not just a PDF, so you can see the videos.
Okay.
Yep.
How, or, or if the videos, that would be great. I want to echo some of what I've been hearing about the importance of having reliable data when we're making decisions, because these are really important decisions. So from the enrollment side, because this information came from the Davis Demographics report using our '21-'22 data, and we don't have an updated Davis Demographics for '22-'23 yet, that's problematic for two reasons. And, and one is, the projection they had for this year, our actuals are 150 students less. So when we kind of look at all of that, that multi-year projections, it's, it's over by at least 150, and I don't know if that would have changed their projections in the future. So that's one caveat. The other caveat is, it was 20, the year, '21-'22 is when we had the most elementary students at CIS. So they weren't at their home schools. So anything that's based on where students were in that year may lead us to incorrect conclusions about, oh, wait a minute, you know, Don Bonito looked like it went down, or, you know, whatever school, but that's because they were somewhere and they went back. And so we did have some data that put all of those students back at their home schools, so we were able to kind of have multi-year data. But Davis Demographics doesn't have that in their numbers. And if you look at the '22, 2022 to 2028, I think you guys show enrollment projected to go from 400 to like 570, but CIS is already back down to 200 this year. And I think we still have maybe 50-some elementary kids who may trickle back to traditional schools. So, and so if you put those 500 kids at CIS, that means they didn't go to the other schools in the projected enrollment for 2028. And so it's kind of hard to say, yeah, we really have excess capacity at these particular sites. I mean, one thing Davis Demographics will not do is project on a school-by-school basis because of open enrollment. You guys have, and I don't think you've given us the methodology for how you made those decisions. And I know for a school like Mura, for instance, that is showing year-over-year growth, you know, you're showing them going back to, you know, below where they were four or five years ago. So I, I don't know how, I don't know how to take these enrollment numbers and then use them for excess capacity from that perspective. I also, if you look at the slide, and then this capacity projection, these are different than the numbers that are currently on the website in terms of the enrollment. And that was a little disturbing. So I don't know what's going on there, but...
I'd have to look. It should not be different.
They, I think they were the same in the original. These ones are different, though. So the PowerPoint that was up yesterday matched the website, and these are, are different. Again, so I just, I'm not relying on these numbers, because I don't know. On the slide that had the Kinder birth rate, I don't know if we can flip to it quickly. My question on this, or, or what I want to note, is that the year that it has that's current is the one with the lowest of that black bar. And then it shows the black bar, our capture rate going back up. And it does that because even though birth rate keeps declining, you can see on the blue bars, we held our Kinder enrollment constant. So we assumed our capture rate for Kinder was going back up. I, I don't know what that was based on. So I'm a little worried that we used higher numbers for Kinder in the Davis projections than is perhaps warranted. The students have already not been born, in other words. I mean, these are the years, these have already happened. And again, that ripples forward through all of them. So I think having an updated Davis Demographics report with '22-'23 actual enrollment, kids back, a lot of them from CIS back at their home schools, I don't know how we can make any decisions without that. On capacity, I think the point that Ms. Hully made was right on. I've heard it from others. I've sat down with the Mura principal and said, I don't understand why we have to get you three new portables for next year. This says you have tons of space. And because his loading factor is closer to 21 than 27, because of the programs that are running at his school. And so, again, how do we make these decisions? I can't take a number that's perhaps not right and subtract a different number that's not right and say, look at my excess capacity and make a decision. So just all of those different things. I think it's really important, to what Patrice said about the decision, rather, to tear down and build new. I had already been maybe trending a little bit that way since we were asked to fill out the prioritization form, and partially because when you hear the complaints about the bathrooms and the plumbing, and these are just things that we can keep putting Band-Aids on, but you put Band-Aids on for 30 or 40 or 50 years, and it's not a good situation. And then to have the educational master plan and to look at some of those spaces, I mean, we can't make those spaces in some of our old buildings. I just, I mean, I don't know that we can rip down all the interior walls and make some of those flexible. On the, on the old building?
Uh-huh.
Well, I mean, you know, if it's like the one you showed us, where it looked like you really, 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 really ripped it down. You didn't just...
Even on your historic buildings, you can do substantial alter, interior alterations, just not on the real historic spaces, such as your auditorium or your dining facility or something of that.
But I mean, really, really extreme, which I'm not clear, maybe, maybe I need to be corrected. Have we done that with measured TT money, where we've really kind of redone an interior? No, that's a brand-new school. I'm talking about taking an old school and really, so to Patrice, so I was, started leaning even more that way because of thinking that if we really want to have new and different spaces that aren't, you know, the way we built schools 50 years ago, it, it's not just make it a little bit nicer, put in new air conditioning, paint, paint it, and call it a day, and put in new furnishings. It's, it's, it goes beyond flexible seating to really flexible spaces. I, I think it, I'm still, and I will say this again, would really like a list of our standards for our sites. And, and I say that, at the DLEC meeting last night, it was mentioned that parents sometimes don't have a space at their school site that is for parents to meet, to gather, to feel welcomed. We've talked about putting in wellness centers at some of our sites. Maybe we've replaced some of our parent rooms with wellness centers. A lot of this has to do with capacity. So if we tell these guys, well, we need these five extra spaces at every single room, I mean, that puts a whole different complexion on whether our schools are the right size and have enough room for the students we want to put there. So I think that's really, really important. And I think that also gets us to prioritization, because if we say it's really important for a school to have these 10 things, and this school has one of them, and this has eight, I would probably prioritize that school first. But I don't know what that list is. I can't. And then, and then lastly, you know, we were asked at our last meeting, a question by DLR, from DLR, saying, you know, what, what is the school size you want? And I'm not sure if everyone wants to have a school configuration, grade configuration conversation again, but this would seem to be the time. If I'm going to substantially redo a school, I want to know if I'm going to have middle school kids there and they need a gym, or they're not going to be there. I want to make sure we have enough space when we add six more months of TK students. Maybe I'm getting rid of early childhood, and I'm going to fit my TK students into those spaces. But if not, I need spe, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how some of these program changes and potential grade configuration changes. Is it a time to say, let's go 712, let's go 612? Is it time to put sixth grade back at elementaries? Because it's more important to keep all of our elementaries open, but we need to have a larger student base at each side. I know that's a lot of decisions to make before spending dollars. I, I'm a little worried about spending all the dollars and then trying to make those decisions. So in terms of order, I'm leaning more towards the other. Thank you.
So a lot of you have spoken, and trustee Cahalan actually won the most inspiring speech, so that tells you something.
She thinks I'm a big pessimist.
So let's, let's, I just want to say that this is a huge opportunity. I, when I was elected a couple years ago, I had no idea I was going to have to make this decision. You know, $500 million could transform our district. And I think I'm very fortunate, privileged to have this opportunity, that we, we have this opportunity, and I'm part of that. And I think about the arc of justice, and we're bending that arc of justice right now. We can bend that arc of justice, and I hope that my fellow trustees will see this opportunity, too. And I'm not hearing very much... And I'm not hearing very much forward motion. I hear we need better data, which I love data, so yes, we need the most accurate data to make the best decisions. If we can fine-tune that, let's do that. But we also need to move forward. There is an actual timeline that we need to adhere to. If we don't get to this window, we will be one more year and not having that chance for nation start. So I want all of us to please think, imagine. And, and, you know, Trustee Cahalan was talking about the grant opportunities, and I'm, I'm like, oh, how can I wrap my brain about a grant opportunity? And now I have to go back and do my homework on the grant opportunities. So yes, we need to do that, but what is, what is the dream? And I, I really would like us to dare to dream. So I've went over this data many times. I'm a math person, so yes, I value data, but given the more accurate data, I, I, my personal value is on socioeconomically disadvantaged schools. To me, when I see schools that have a high percentage SED, and if you can move through that slide, please. The purples, the purple circles are the, have the seventy-five to hundred percent of enrollment of SED, so you have, let me have my glasses on. So you got the Northwest, you have John Mirror, Washington, Madison.
What are the white bubbles?
They didn't have data available at the Department of Education to determine.
Okay, just, I just...
Yep.
Dean, I noticed you didn't say Octavia, and I wasn't sure.
Okay. Longfellow, Marshall. And then you have special red ones that are not on the legend, but they're seventy-one percent and seventy-seven percent for, gosh, even with my glasses, I can't read this, Webster and Norma Coombs. So that's my heart. My heart is with the SEDs. I'm very much in support of community schools, so I think about, you know, I assume the SEDs are, that we don't want to burden them to have to, uh, have transportation to a school that's too far from them. So that is in my calculus of priorities. I also am looking at, um, let's see, the heat maps. So the heat maps tell us where the students are coming from. So this is me valuing the data. Now I can't find it. Okay, so elementary, can you go to, oh, yeah, TK five. So, blue means awesome, I guess. Surplus capacity of zero to ten percent, so we're at capacity for the blue. And so as you can see from, in the elementaries, there's no blue. And then the next, uh, hi, more highly utilized school would be Altadena Arts. And then, then it falls to thirty to forty percent surplus. Wait, is there any purples? No. So then it falls to thirty to forty percent surplus for Jackson, Longfellow, Fields, Sierra Madre Elementary, Hamilton, and San Rafael. But if you go to the next slide to six to eight, the superstars are Marshall and Sierra Madre Middle. They are almost at capacity. And then going to high schools, nine to twelve, Marshall again is at capacity, almost at capacity. There, no, there's no percentage there, but nineteen-six fifty-eight out of nineteen-seventy capacity, so they're almost at hundred percent capacity. So that tells me those schools are doing really well. And, you know, we want to be careful to not disrupt those schools, or if we are, we have to be really thoughtful about it. Um, obviously, Marshall came out. Something's going very well with Marshall. And I want to, I, I've never had my children at Marshall. I don't have that personal experience, but thank you all for coming to share your very personal stories, even students. So something's going well there, and I would kind of like to know if there's an opportunity to expand at that location. You know, something's going well, so is there a potential there? And if something's going well there, maybe we want to, as an educational plan, mimic that in another location. Just putting it out there. But also looking at the distribution of the high schools and the density map. You have Marshall and PHS very close to each other, so that creates a competition. And if you look at the distribution, you have Blair very, like on the outskirts of the southern district, and then you have Mirror on the northwest Pasadena, and then you got the middle, um, Marshall and PHS. So I represent over here, and I feel like Sierra Madre has a, has the furthest kind of commute to get to, the closest one, which is PHS. So I would, I wonder if there's an opportunity there to have a more equal distribution somehow of the locations of these high schools. Also, the southern, the south-east part is kind of, there's nothing there either, so. Not sure what I just said, but I'm trying to give some, some forward motion there. But I, I'm just saying, I do prioritize SEDs. I, I do want to make sure we're representing the distribution based on the heat maps. So that's why I asked for the overlay of the schools on top of the heat maps to see if that, our distribution at the schools mirrors the concentration of our students. Because if we want community schools, we want that, we want to encourage that community based on the location of our schools. So again, it's an opportunity. And I want to ask Mr. Fleming and Dr. McDonald, are you getting the feedback you need to move forward, or what kind of feedback do you need to move forward?
Well, I can tell you that I'm, I'm taking copious notes here, and I'm trying to categorize, you know, the comments that I'm hearing from board members. So I'm getting there, but I think you have just a little bit more to discuss before I have a clear picture.
We do, and next, I think, Jennifer, and then I haven't gone, but you can go, Pat, and then I'll go last.
I have a few things to say. One is on the historic aspects, the slide on the historic nature. Can we move to that? Because I just want to get the title of the slide correct instead of flipping through all this paper. Historic designation. Okay, so this clearly is about our school sites? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. I think this is an important aspect of the plan because some of our schools are examples of formal American architecture for public education. And I know that we have some schools in the country that put kids in strip malls and call it a school. You know, we don't have that. So I, I think really, building on that and actually marketing that is quite good because these schools were built for kids to be in there all day long. Also, I do know that you can put a building on a historic register and still do HVAC and do all of that, because I did some of that work. And all of the work that needs to be done prior to historic designation, all that front-end work can sometimes cost a lot, but I've already started that work on a few of our buildings, namely Elliott. I'm not saying that I'm infringing on your area, but I'm just saying, this is something I'm really interested in because it's extremely important as a part of a child's education, the room that they sit in. And also on the socioeconomically disadvantaged list, I'd kind of like to see the information on that for our charter schools, too. Is that possible?
I'd have to look if it's available.
Okay. I think it is on Ed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see that also, so we can get a full picture. And I'd also like to ask that the information that was done from the enrollment committee, I'm going to be bringing in some of that information because I think this is part of it, too, because we did look at a lot of these aspects. Thank you so much.
I keep forgetting my mic is a little finicky when I move it. So I agree with the point that Kim brought up about talking about our grade spans. Do we, do we want, I mean, we, we, we have, just based on our current enrollment in our existing middle schools and our existing elementary schools, we have a, an issue that's going to get worse in the next three or four years, and by 2030, we're, we're going to have, had to make some decisions about secondary. Either we're moving to all six twelves, or we're moving to fewer schools, or we're making some change at secondary sometime between now and 2030. We could do what Arcadia did. We can empty out PHS and rebuild a forty-five-hundred-person school and close all the rest of the high schools and have one high school. That's what Arcadia did. You should tour that school. It's actually quite nice. But I know there's lots of people that don't like big high schools. I don't like big high schools. My kids don't go to the big high school. They go to the small one. So that's a factor. But we, as a board, we have to have those conversations. We can't not have those conversations. And I, I do want to acknowledge, and, and having been through the 2017 consolidated, consolidation conversations, the public comment that struck with me the most was the woman who came to the podium and said, we don't want any more meetings. We don't want any more discussions. All it does is pit these families against each other. We want you, the board, to make the right decision, and then just do it. And the reason why that struck with, struck with me is because it's true that even having, even putting on an agenda, a conversation where we're talking about the possibility of consolidations or, or things like that, it makes everybody really anxious in the community. So I get it, but that's part of our job. We have to have those conversations. That said, I don't think we need to make those conversations be the limiter on what we decide to move forward with in this Phase One. We're talking about three schools in Phase One. And you can look at these maps, and you can look at these data in all sorts of different ways, and you can think about grade spans, you could think of that. There's three elementary schools that we can pick on this list that we know can stay. I, I, I look at Madison, and I'm like, it's right in the middle of the heat map, it's the highest SED, you know, school in the district, and forty-four percent of the people that live in the attendance area go somewhere else. So one of the reasons why they go somewhere else is presumably because they don't like the facility at Madison. And I can think of lots of reasons for that. Its drop-off is terrible. It doesn't have any, we could redo that school and have a drop-off on, on Los Robles and add another building, and I think that would be a good place to start, and it wouldn't be something that needs to wait on all these other conversations. We even have a school site we can put the kids at. We can, we could move Madison to Roosevelt for a year while we redo Madison. So I think that's a no-brainer for me to put that one on, on the high priority list, and because the state matching funds are also fairly negligible. It's not like we're passing up a lot of money if, by, not by doing it now. I think the conversation that, that we then have to have is between now and, what, a month and a half from now, in order to be able to move forward with some of these things, is what, what are the other two school sites? And I think you can make a lot of arguments for a lot of, of schools on here. I think once you move to secondary, you open up a lot of those other conversations about grade spans and whether or not, you know, how are we going to deal with those problems? And I don't, I honestly don't know that we have time to have those conversations between now and when we need to give this man three sites to start on, or we're not going to break ground until 2026. And we passed this bond in 2020, and we haven't done much except maintenance yet. And I would like to see us move forward with some transformative projects. So if I have to throw a hat in the ring, in the, in the interest of moving the conversation forward, if I have to throw a school in the ring for, let's put this one first on the list, I would say Madison is my top number-one choice. I'm happy to tell everybody what my other two choices are, but I don't want to dominate the whole conversation, so I'll let Michelle talk.
Also, of course, you made me think of things, but I just want to say to, how'd you say it? You, I think you said there's wrinkles to what you said. I think, I think it is probably possible to pick a small set of schools and then hap, start some of these longer-term discussions and conversations. But sitting at facilities, everybody wants something now, and there are a lot of things that are safety-related, comfort-related, that I can't say, ah, you know, wait five years. It might be sick, sorry, you know? So I, unless we feel really pretty comfortable that we can get another bond of this size in, in, you know, six to ten years, that's my concern, is that if, if we don't have a, this is what we want, and we need to set aside this money and not kind of keep doing these small things, because, you know, I think I wrote down that we've spent about fifty thousand already, I mean, fifty million already, or we've contracted for fifty million already. So that, that's just my response to, you know, I think that's a good idea. I just don't want to wait too long before locking up the rest of it because it'll be gone if we don't lock it up. Second of all, I just want to clarify. I, I feel like capacity is a driver, and what's more of a driver for me is what is a size that a school operates well at? You know, what, and, and I know from my elementary days, it was like, what's a good size so that you have a reasonable amount of parents who want to get involved, that you have a large enough faculty, that it's not pulling teeth because these are only three people who volunteer for every single extra event, and, and you've... It's, it's more about how does it run? It's not about all the dollars. It's like, is it big enough to run smoothly? And I think we know that we are paying for extra teachers at our middle schools because they're not running smoothly at their smaller size. And so I, I think people focus on capacity, or when you close a school, you save money. I'm kind of like, well, I want to be big enough so that we can support programs, so that we can have a broader IB program and not say, well, everyone has to choose one of these two focuses because that's all we can offer with this size. So there are other reasons to think about what size a school should be, and I would want to have some of that thought before we redid Madison so that we make it the right size. And then last, so what I said before is about, about the capacity data, about the enrollment data, about having staff bring us some sets of options, like, well, we could do this, or we could do that. Tina can suggest things, you can suggest things. I feel like somebody, whether it's DLR, whether it's staff, brings us a, here's five options, and maybe we like one of them, maybe we put two of them together. I mean, so the things that I listed, the, the capacity, the enrollment, options around school configuration and size, and the list of the site standards, this is an ask for staff to bring us this so that we can move this conversation. So I don't want to keep asking for it. I want to be able to move ahead, but I think this is what we need. I'm not sure everyone agrees that's what we need, but...
We listened to a lot of public comment about HVAC, bathrooms, all of these things. So in the interest of moving forward, what if we set a baseline for all of these schools and fixed what people want fixed? Our athletic fields are not great. It hurts our enrollment. Let's fix them. Let's fix up the bathrooms. Let's get the HVAC. Let's get the HVAC, and let's get people feeling really good about what we're doing. And then we can have a bigger discussion about a larger school. Just because something's not showy, that doesn't bother me. If we do the things internally that people are expecting us to fix, that makes me happy. And I think we're moving in the right direction then. And that's what I would like to see us do. When we talk about closing schools, we hurt enrollment. And it's disturbing to me that this has all of a sudden popped up when this really wasn't discussed as a whole. So I'd like to focus on the people we have now in our schools that are upset about what the schools look like. Let's, let's make people and the students comfortable. And let's set that baseline and move ahead with what we need. Thank you.
I come from a very unique district, and one of the great things that came from, from this, looking at this particular data, is the realization that out of all the zip codes in Pasadena, when you look at the capture date, my district was the only one that grew. It didn't grow by a lot, but it was the only one that grew. But also, when I think about my district and District Seven, what I think about is, it is the district that offers, the district, the biggest possibilities for growth without impacting the enrollment of all the other schools in the district. However, I don't want to focus my conversation on that. I do want to focus my conversation on the fact that in a district like mine, if you can look at that particular map or any of the other maps, we see that there are three school closures and we have one elementary school left for the entire west side of Pasadena. And our decisions will reflect the reality of that we are not invested and not interested in the west side of Pasadena to be part of our school district. And I want everybody to be very cognizant of, that's the message that we're sending. And second, the other thing that I see is that in all of these red circles and all of these closed schools and invested schools, and the conversation has been focused on elementary school education. And I think that PHS and Muir are two schools that deserve great investment. Most of the examples that the academic program presented looked at reimagining spaces primarily for high school education and high school students. And so we can use this opportunity to really invest in the athletic facilities of these two schools, as well as the classroom configuration of these two schools. Maybe keeping four pools is very costly, but if we focus in two, and then students can attend any high school that they want, but then they can bus into one of the two athletic centers. That is a way to reduce costs, to ensure that every student has access to top notch athletic facilities, invest in schools that are pillars for Pasadena, and that absolutely need our attention.
I have a question. What is the timeline for spending the bond money?
Really have to just leave the mic there. So the, the bond authorization is in perpetuity.
Okay.
Once we decide to issue a tranche bonds, usually in response to a specific, we, we did our initial release because we just knew we had a bunch of maintenance work that needed to be done. But typically what would happen is we'd identify some projects, we would have the architects do the plans, we would, we would then, you know, budget out how much money we need, and then we would issue bonds that matched that amount of money. And then the one thing that the district actually, for those in the public that aren't aware, we, we overissued bonds at one point during Measure TT. So we issued a bunch of bonds, but then we didn't spend the money fast enough. And it happened that we got a waiver from the federal government. They didn't ding us for it. But generally speaking, the IRS frowns upon that because when you issue the bonds, the cash comes in because we sell the bonds, but it sits at Laco and it earns interest. So what the feds don't want you to do, or CDE, or really the taxpayer doesn't want you to do, is issue bonds and then just sit on the money. Otherwise, school districts would pass a $500 million bond, they'd issue all $500 million worth of money, they'd park all of the money at Laco, and then they would just wait for the interest payment to come in and be like, this is what we could spend on facilities improvements this year. And that, they don't want you to do that. So, so the, we, this bond issuance lasts until we or some future board has spent the last dollar of it. And...
Okay. Thank you for that. So now that I'm clear, I just want to, I want to take us back to the conversation we were having at our last meeting with DLR, where we were talking about having a standard for our facilities, whether they have students in them or not. And I also, I want to take us back to this, to considering the schools that didn't get Measure TT funds or Measure Y funds that have students in them right now, who were on our priority list for playgrounds or whatever renovations they needed inside of their schools. And I want us to consider that as well because there are students in those schools right now. The other thing that I would like us to consider before we, I feel like this, this talk of, of closing schools or considering which schools to renovate first is being forced. And I, I would rather see us go through the process of really vetting the schools before we, if we're not going to take the, the priority projects or the, the projects by priority, I would rather see us have a process for determining which schools we put in order or in a priority order for receiving the funding or the bond, the work first. I have a lot going on inside of my head right now, and I'm trying to keep it together because it all wants to come out at once. Because it gets really, really complicated when, you know, we have conversations and you want to put one school out there and we haven't, we haven't considered other schools. And yes, it's hard for people. Families get anxious, they get upset, they want to pull their students. There's got to be a way that we can have this conversation as a board where we're more empathetic. I know you may say it's not about that, but it is. We, we're taking care of people's children. We're taking care of families. And I think that we need to come across a little more sensitive, and we need to honor, if you will, we need to honor those who were on the list to receive something. They were told that they were going to receive something out of this bond, and now it's almost as if we're just scratching all of that and we're going to start from scratch. So I am concerned about that. I am also concerned that we don't, we have not discussed a standard for upkeep for all of our properties. And the reason that's important is because if we are not going to physically occupy the properties ourselves, then they need to be in a situation where we can lease them with minimal cost to us for having to go in and fix this and fix that and, and add this and add that. So, you know, I'm just concerned that we're not having the thorough conversations and now we're jumping to, you know, I want to put this school out there first. So I'm just concerned about that. And there was also something that Kim pointed out that, you know, I'm, I'm trying to remember what it was. It was a statement that you made. And I was thinking that, you know, it's something that we need to consider and we need to talk about. We need to seriously consider. So I know that this item was not on the agenda for us to make any decisions on tonight. It's just on for discussion. But I think that we need to come together as a board and really hash out how we want to approach this process. I think that's important. The last time that, you know, we went through the school closure process, it was painful. It was painful for those of us that were, you know, on that committee, and it was painful for the community. I can't explain to you all how that felt. And after it was through, I just wanted to cry because it was really hurtful for everyone involved, painful for everyone involved. So I would suggest that, you know, we come together, maybe we appoint a, a committee of us to really dive in and, and look at this information and try to come up with a way for us to, A, consider those who were already on the priority list, and how we're going to approach those projects, or whether we should approach those projects. But if we're not going to approach those projects, you know, we need to have a good reason why. If we're going to consider school closures first, then we're not giving our enrollment committee the opportunity to do the work or to execute the plan that they, that they have put in place. It's almost like saying, you've done all this work, we don't believe in it, we don't think that your plan is going to work, so instead of trying to support you, we're just going to close the schools because, you know, we don't believe that you can do what you say you can do. So I don't know, you know, we need to, to look at all of that and try to really decide how we want to move through this process. I don't feel that tonight, I'm at a place where I could, I could go along with talking about closing schools at this moment. I just don't. And I certainly don't know if I could support putting Madison School in Roosevelt when I know what's coming down the line that's being proposed for Roosevelt. And we can't ignore that because that's something that we don't want to fail. So, I mean, we need to consider it. We need to consider it. So, I mean, I'm just trying to be real. And, you know, I think we have some more critical discussions and thoughts that we need to get together on around this issue before we just start trying to push us forward. So I see Pat, then I see Patrice.
So a couple, a couple of quick things. I agree that we need, we should have a standard. We, and we should, the, the standard should be based upon the educational master plan and what we, as a district, thinks that every school site needs. And then also, if we're going to put a separate program at a school, what the program needs, not necessarily, we don't want to give every school the same thing if we have different programs at every school, right? That wouldn't, that wouldn't make any sense. So we do need a standard for, do, do we want a library at every school? Yes. Do we want a parent room at every school? Yes. Do we need an office at every, well, obviously, there needs to be a place for the office manager. Those, those sorts of questions are pretty easy. When it gets down to, do we want to allow a specialty classroom at this school? Well, yes, but we want it to match the program that's at the school. So Altadena is probably going to wind up with a few more classrooms than some other schools would have because they have multiple arts and each one kind of needs its own room, right? So I agree that we should have those conversations. What I'm, what I have a real concern about is, so the priority list that we came up with, with the end of the Measure TT projects was the final culling of the final culling of the final culling of things that didn't get done in the 2008 facilities master plan. So when you say, if we're revisiting that priority list, we're telling people, some people, that we're not going to do their project. To some extent, that's true, but also there are a ton of people in this district that still have projects that they expected to get done before I got on the board. I will bring up Longfellow's Kitchen because Erica's probably watching this meeting and she would get mad at me if I didn't mention it. So that's also important. And we heard testimonials from a bunch of parents tonight, but I'm, I'm at a school site and I know almost all of us have kids in the district. So we've heard parents at every school site, these problems exist, they need to be tackled now, they need, it was like, we can't wait, we can't wait, we need these things done now. Well, if we don't move ahead with, with making sort of strategic level decisions about how we're going to reimagine the district, what's going to happen is, in very short order, a significant chunk of change is going to be spent on maintenance. There's $497 million worth of just replace the things that currently exist in the district but are breaking in the First Pass master plan website. That's it. That's the whole budget. That's not, that's not building new athletic facilities. That's only replacing the ones we have that are broken. And that's just talking about the buildings. It's not talking about fields. Fields aren't on the list. The gyms are, but the fields aren't. It's not talking about putting a pool at Marshall. It's not talking, it's not talking about things like that. So I also agree with, with the point that, was it Jarma that brought it up, that we need to make a decision about athletics facilities because we cannot build four sport facilities at four high schools. The, the money is not there. So that is a separate conversation that I think we need to have. But if we wait until we have all of those conversations before we make any decisions, it will be 2027 and we still will not have started moving on fixing an elementary school or a middle school or a, whatever we want to start with. And I really do think that once we start making changes to the district, our expectations for what these things should look like will change because we'll build a school site and some parents are going to be like, we love this school site. And other people will be like, I'm not sending my kid to that school. I want a traditional school that looks like this. So they're going to go from that school to another school. And then when we ask that school what they want, they're going to be like, we don't want these open learning spaces. That was a fad. I mean, I don't think we will be too many of those parents, but there will be some.
Okay, Pat.
So...
Start winding it down.
I, I get, my point is that we can talk this issue to death.
You can talk it to death.
Well...
We're not going to talk it to death.
So far, I'm the only one that's actually suggested a thing to do.
You're the only one that's been talking. No. And, and we're not, and, and that's what I don't want us to do because you jumped in front of the entire potential conversation that we really need to have. So that's all I'm saying. I saw Patrice, and then I saw Jarma.
One more question.
Okay.
To your point, I think that facilities would be a, a good place to start having this discussion.
I just want to say a couple of quick things. One, I think that we need to get a handle on our data in terms of our enrollment capacity and kind of projections, and also sort of ensuring that we have really good sense of kind of what the demographics of the district is as a whole. I'm not certain that we're there yet, and without good data, I'm not comfortable making any firm decisions just yet. I want us to be smart about what we prioritize, what criteria we're using to do so, and ensuring that we are going to do the best job to be the best steward of public dollars, but make the best investments that are going to support our students, support our schools, and support the district overall. I also think that part of that is, we need to maybe take a step back and think about what are the standards that we want to have for campuses? What are the priorities? What aligns to our current programming and what might align the future programming, et cetera? We need to figure those things out before we start deciding how to slice and dice this bond money. I worked too hard to raise that money for us to make haphazard decisions about how we spend it. I also want to underscore Michelle's point about how painful school closure conversations are. I have, I want to just shut that down right now because it's not on the table for discussion. The board has not made any action to take that step. And the fact that there's already chatter in the community about... And the fact that there's already chatter in the community about that is really, really disconcerting to me. So we need to be real clear that it's not an item on the agenda. It's not an item for action at this moment. So whatever this chatter is, it's in the community, we need to stop it right now. It does not serve anybody. It does not serve us well. And it will not help to make this process go in a way that's going to be productive and valuable and supportive for any of our students.
Well, don't mean to offend anybody, but I think this is an open discussion and I don't want to be shamed for sharing my ideas. I'm just going to say it. I also understand school closure. I wouldn't be in this seat if I wasn't, if I didn't experience that trauma, although it wasn't firsthand, it was secondhand in this room. And I was also on that, doing public comments saying, birth rates? Yeah, right, you know? I think I said it to Ms. Kenny. And now there's the birth rates again. So I'm learning. But I do want to, you know, I do want to balance that. You know, I do want to be compassionate about these decisions are very traumatic. But yes, we do not want to put our families through that trauma every year or every few years. And I do believe that, at least the last closure series, was a different situation because we didn't have a bond to say, we are going to make this shiny school for you now. No, you get to go to this other school. Good luck, you know? Different. It's kind of like, you know, I rent a house and I'm always thinking about, you know, that the house we're going to buy and it's going to be a better house, you know? So it's not as simple as this is a horrible thing. This is a good thing. This can be a good thing. And I just want to put that out there. Kudos to Trusty Cahalan again for offering ideas. I also do want staff to look into the great, different grade spans. K-8, 612, Marshall's 612, it's the only 612, K-8. We only have McKinley as K-8. What's going well with that? What's not going well? And how can we inform the facilities master plan that if we do another K-8, that we do it better than how McKinley's doing it? You know, like do what's working, but improve what's not working. So it is an opportunity to explore and transform. 612, maybe something about 612 is making Marshall successful. Can we do that for other high schools? That's something to look into. Look at natural K-8 merging. I'm just going to say Washington Elementary and Octavia E. Butler, where my daughter goes to. They're right next to each other already. Is there a natural merging of those schools? And, you know, yeah, we welcome more students at Octavia E. Butler. I'm so proud of that namesake. And also, if we do modify our, some schools' grade spans, what is decision-making process in which site it would be? Actually, that's a question for you. How do you decide which site is the better site to be the destination for those students and what happens in the interim to the site that's being built? Can you answer that?
To be clear, you're talking about if students were to move from one site to another?
Yeah, say elementary to, and a six to eight would be?
You would want to look at CDE recommendations for site size primarily. If you're going to go migrate to a different model of configuration for grade spans, obviously, if you're going to put six through eighth grade with an elementary school, you want a large enough site to accommodate their PE requirements. Similar for a 612.
And have you had experience with that sort of thing? K-5, 6, 8 together?
We've had some experience, yes. You guys are unique in that you have all models potentially available to observe.
Okay, it's my turn. Okay, so thank you. So I mean, I'm thinking you're, I think you hear our board saying that there needs to be standards for each school site. And I guess I would like to understand what you are hearing and if that's something that's a common request for, you know, reforming a district? And could those, could decisions be made at the same time as standards like that are being implemented?
I guess standards can mean anything. I'm assuming that educational standards are what we're most concerned about, but I'm sensing that it's maintenance standards. And that's, it's kind of a, your M&amp;O department is responsible for what their maintenance requirements are. Every district is going to be different. You have to go through what your deferred maintenance funds is and what they can support throughout the years. I'm not sure if you want to be allocating bond money strictly to maintenance and operations funding. Well, you can allocate bond money to maintenance and operations issues, maintenance issues primarily. Like just go fix all the bathrooms in all the district. I mean, you could do that. But if you're going to modernize a school, like if you're talking about Madison, that's part of the modernization right up front. So it's a different story at that point.
Okay.
So I want to echo, the last thing is, I want to echo Trusty Cahalan's point about, yes, we can kind of drag this for a long time and have certain requirements, but at some point, we need to have movement to start the ball rolling. And I do think, I think I heard you say that recommending the focus on elementary schools so that we can improve that enrollment? Because we can, once we look at the elementary school, we could focus on TK to bring in those new families? And can you kind of talk to what the TK reform looks like? Or any sort of special facilities with TK?
Well, TK requires us to actually implement Title V classrooms if you're going to seek state money to support the program. The assertion here is, is it looks like your capture rate is not stable in the early years. And if we want to make a concerted effort to grab children that are born now, this is a generational change. You got to the point where you are now through how many generations? Recapturing that newborn, new parent that want to be part of the PSU school district would happen once we start reinventing those schools to appeal to those parents. That's the premise. And that's based on the educational plan, implementing those types of changes. So I have no basis. I do require the board to give me direction at a certain level.
Okay.
At some point, we need to have another meeting.
We, we need to wind it down. So I'm going to, we're going to hear from Board Member Holly, Board Member Velazquez, and then the last word from Superintendent. Thank you.
I understand the frustration on the board with we're not making a big decision. We're not doing that. But I'm going to say this in all honesty. It is difficult to come together honestly to have that conversation when I hear out in the community that everybody's talking about school closures. And that was a surprise to me. So that just kind of popped up. So we always talk about trust out there. Let's work on the trust right here. So topics popping up about schools closing and people freaking out is very unsettling. It's going to be hard to move ahead as a board to work towards a transformational public education district if we can't pull together what our goals are. And we're going to have different ideas and there's going to have to be compromise. And that's sometimes what I don't feel here. It's like, you're going to have to see it my way and this is the way we're going to do it. And that's not really going to work. So we talked about TK and capturing new parents. All that data is in the enrollment committee. All that data is in the report that is on our website. We did that work. So I'm going to make a suggestion that to get to a transformational education system, because that's what people are talking about right now, it's what we have to do. This is what public education districts are doing. They're all having this problem. We're going to have to grab those parents, but we're going to have to come to, together, and make a goal there on TK and how we're going to look at those sites. But we're going to need to do it honestly, together, transparently. Thank you.
I'm going to have to echo some of the sentiments of some of my board members in that I oppose the idea of school closures. And so in the nuance of that conversation, that does not mean that we are not looking forward to the educational needs of our district in the future. There is the possibility of understanding hybrid spaces, right? Or it doesn't have to, not hybrid spaces, but it doesn't, it's not a black or white conversation. I think that there's a lot of gray in here. And so I think that I would want to echo President Bailey's comments about having conversations about this. I think the facilities committee is an excellent place to have those conversations and those prioritizations. And think about innovative ways in which we can give students competitive ways to deal with athletic programs, understand and prioritize education and the curriculum that goes into each of our campuses as part of, as a factor in understanding our enrollment. And understanding the pedagogical reasons why, or incentives to move or explore different models that will include a K-8 or middle, high school and what are the implications on the existing programs? And plan with the educational curriculum as a priority and as a goal first before everything, before other decisions. And so I think I'm going to have to join my committee members in saying that I do not support school closures and a comprehensive plan to move forward.
Okay, so I want to summarize what I think I've heard from all the board members. So understanding that instruction drives construction. We're going to start out by looking at the Edmaster Plan, making sure that contained in that document is information regarding the learning environment that would be most conducive for learning for SED students. And then we also want to make sure that there are standards in there around what each school site should have in terms of spaces. And then possibly grade configurations as well and what grade configurations typically, based on research, are best for students. Then on the facilities master planning side, it sounds to me like the board wants to take a phased approach. So in the short term, we would look at selecting three to five schools. The administration would select three to five schools as options, elementary schools, that is, that we could look at in terms of applying this transformation model to. The board would then, if we brought five schools, for example, the board would select three of those schools. And then we could begin the whole process of looking at what those projects would look like. In the longer term, we want to look at such things as grade configurations. We want to look at declining enrollment data. We want to look at capacity data. But we want to make sure that the data that we're looking at is accurate. I heard from Board Member Kenny that the Davis demographic data needs to be updated so that we have more accurate data with which to make decisions. And then also, look at some smaller projects that should be prioritized in the near term. You know, issues such as HVAC, plumbing, safety issues, just things that we can work on right away. So those are all of the things that I have. Did I miss anything? Does that sound about right?
Right now, it does. It's getting late.
Okay, all right.
Before we go, we have a public comment and then Dr. Blanco.
Lori Tullumian.
Can you go after?
Lori Tullumian. Is this on? Okay. I give you all credit for your energy, being here so late. Board President Bailey, members of the board, Superintendent McDonald and members of ELT, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I have the honor and privilege of being the proud principal at Marshall Fundamental. The Marshall community is comprised of exceptionally hardworking staff, students and parents in PUSD. And your support of our incredibly successful 612 school is imperative. Our facilities are in desperate need of repair and renovation. Our outstanding scholar athletes, passionate students deserve it. Despite challenges, we recently received a six-year WASC accreditation. We have CIF-winning sports, a robust and thriving arts program, students receiving millions of dollars in scholarships for their academic achievements, and that's just to name a few of our highlights. The fact that Marshall is not given the facility's attention that other campuses receive is an egregious equity issue. We are proud to be the highest enrolled school in the district and continue to maintain our enrollment. We ask that the plans for facilities upgrades occur expeditiously and that your commitment to our 1,800-plus diverse student population, which is over 70% socioeconomically disadvantaged, mirrors that of any other PUSD site. Marshall plans to have a grand centennial celebration in 2025 and you are all cordially invited to attend. I have invested 24 years in PUSD, 12 in administration. I have found my home at Marshall. It is one of your pillar schools, as it was discussed. And I look forward to our continued growth and success. I want to thank my Marshall community for coming out tonight and for sending their comments. And I thank you all in advance for your support. Thank you.
Timeline? What is the next step and when do we need to do it? Because I don't want to lose that window.
Dr. McDonald is going to get back to us. He took copious notes. He's going to put something together and then he'll bring it back to the board.
I just want to make a plug. I really think that this is a conversation that we should have at the full board level. I don't want to... I'm just very cognizant of things. When we're talking about the facilities master plan, I really do think that should be a full board conversation.
As you're responding to Yarmo's suggestion.
Yeah, because the suggestion that we talk about at facilities, I think there's implementation details that absolutely should be discussed at facilities. But when you're talking about some of these other questions that we brought up, I'm just painfully aware of previous times in the past when a committee... aware of previous times in the past when a committee has come forward with a recommendation, and since a committee is a board minority, that does not necessarily mean that it happens. So I, I think that, um, when we're talking about this, this is a significant chunk of change, and when we have meetings here on the mic in front of the camera, I think that's maximal public transparency. So I would just encourage us to, to keep the facilities master plan conversations at the full board level.
I also can't speak at a facilities meeting because it's a violation of Brown Act.
Okay, I, I believe that, um, Board Member Velazquez just made the, put the thought out there. We, we hadn't made a decision on it.
I, I mean, I was responding to, uh, a comment that you made, um, uh, President Bailey.
Which part of the, so, were you?
Yeah.
But I'm talking about the school closure piece.
Right.
That, that part of the discussion.
That, that's, that's what I, uh, yeah.
I do agree with the, what Patrice said. When it comes to what the long-term impact is on the district and what we do about our declining enrollment, I'm, I'm painfully aware, having been involved as a parent, with, um, suspicion about the district making decisions about my school site. We have a nickname for it at Blair. Blair Annoia. So I understand how that, and I, I do appreciate your comment. I think it's important for the public to know. We, we are so at the early stages of this that it, that it does, like, people need to not jump to conclusions or think that the board's making decisions in the dark or running around and trying to build, like, this is where we talk about this stuff, here. So if you're following board meetings and we didn't talk about it, it's not happening. And people talking about it happening, it's conjecture. It's not based upon any decisions that are actually being made here. So please, yes, if you want to tune into the facilities meeting, let us know. We will make sure you get an invite. I mean, we send out the agendas on ti- times we're talking about it, but, but don't jump to conclusions that there's.
I was only trying to support you who jumped way out there.
Well, I'm just, I'm just interested in seeing ground break before I die of old age.
So, okay, so we don't have to have that conversation. It's fine with me, but I don't think that, you know, anyway. So go ahead, Dr. Blanco. We got five.
Okay, thank you for all the thoughtful conversation this evening. I just want to go back to the piece about the educational master plan and EdSpecs for a moment. We would like to proceed with ordering furniture. One of the things, and it's not on money that we're planning to use, so one of the things that we learned when the parents and community members, teachers went out and sat in the children's furniture in the classrooms, that it's very uncomfortable and, um, difficult to learn. So I feel that is something that we could move forward with all schools and not really be wasting money because the children, no matter where we put them, are going to need, um, furniture. We have started talking with, um, our procurement department about that. So if we, you know, get some setups of what a classroom could look like, you know, we could bring that forward back to you, and maybe we could start moving on that and really, you know, make a difference for the environment, even though it won't be able to be all the flexible, um, rooms and things that we're talking about, but it would be a good start for the classrooms that we have.
I'm sorry, you're ass- saying that you want to buy furniture for every single student in the district?
We would love to do that. That's our plan.
And what money's going to be used for that?
Um, we have ester money that would be allowable for that, and I think a good expenditure to show where ester money's going to improve learning.
Okay, and that's like, okay, I, sorry, staff brought it up, so I just wanted to, it is related to the educational master plan, which is on the agenda, academic master plan. Are we talking 5,000 or 20,000? Ballpark. Ballpark.
We're working on those, um, estimates, and we'll bring that back to the board when we have, we wanted to set up some model classrooms for use to make sure that we didn't invest in something that the teachers really did not like.
For as much as I would like chairs, because I've been to my son's fifth grade class, and there's like, maybe six chairs that match, and there's like a collection of, um, generational chairs in that class. I want ester money for math.
Okay. Do I need a motion to adjourn? Okay. Meeting adjourned.